Welcome, everybody, to the City of Bellevue Regular Council Meeting for September 27th, 2021. Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen House?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers on?
Here.
Thank you.
So tonight, we're honored to have the Somerset PAC 629 We Below One Cub Scouts troop to lead us in the flag salute. Could you start us off, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, in the God, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much for doing that for us tonight, everybody. Appreciate it. Okay, so we have a proclamation to do for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Councilmember Zahn is going to start us off, and then Selin Soto is going to read it for us as well. So Councilmember Zahn, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the culture and contributions of Americans tracing their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. And whereas the observation started in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting every year on September 15th. And whereas the month of September is significant because it marks the anniversary of independence for several Latin American countries. And whereas Hispanics are Bellevue's third-largest population group comprising about 7% of the population. And whereas, like many other groups in our nation and community, Hispanics have been disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic with an increased likelihood of hospitalization and economic challenges. And whereas Bellevue is a welcoming community, and National Hispanic Heritage Month is an important reminder of how much strength we draw as a region from our immigrant roots and our values as a nation of immigrants. And whereas the cultural, education, and economic influences of Hispanic residents can be appreciated in all aspects of life here in the Puget Sound region and throughout the east side. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2021, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and call upon all Bellevue residents to observe this month and to celebrate the contributions of our Hispanic neighbors with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you.
Ms. Soto, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Hi. El mes de la herencia hispana celebra la cultura y las contribuciones de los estadounidenses. Que tienen sus raíces en España, sorry, que tienen sus raíces en España, México, América Central, América del Sur, y las naciones del habla hispana, del Caribe. La observación comenzó en 1968 bajo la presencia de Lyndon Johnson y fue ampliada por el presidente Ronald Reagan. En 1988, para cubrir un periodo de 30 días que comienza cada año el 15 de septiembre. Los hispanos son el tercer grupo de población más grande de Bellevue, que comprende alrededor del 7% de la población. Como muchos otros grupos en nuestra nación y comunidad, los hispanos se han visto afectados de manera desproporcionada por la pandemia de COVID-19, con una mayor probabilidad de hospitalización y desafíos económicos. Bellevue es una comunidad acogedora. Bellevue es una comunidad acogedora. Bellevue es una comunidad acogedora, y el mes nacional de la herencia hispana es un recordatorio importante de cuánta fuerza sacamos como región, de nuestras raíces y de nuestros valores como nación de inmigrantes. Las influencias culturales, educativas, y económicas de los residentes hispanos se pueden apreciar en todos los aspectos de la vida, aquí, en la región del Puget Sound y en todo el lado oeste. Ahora, por lo tanto, yo, Selin Soto, en representación de Lynn Robinson, la alcaldesa de la ciudad de Bellevue, Washington, y en nombre de su consejo municipal, por la presente, procamo el 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre del B2021 como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana. Hago un llamado a todos los residentes de Bellevue para que observen este mes y celebren la contribución de nuestros vecinos hispanos con programas, ceremonias, y actividades apropiadas. Gracias.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful. Okay, next on our list, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, good. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this evening, there is one pre-registered speaker for oral communications. And with that, I will call his name, and that is Mr. Cork Olson. Mr. Olson, can you hear me? Mr. Olson, can you hear me?
No, I can unmute myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you, council members, for taking my testimony tonight. Mayor Robinson and council members and city manager Miyaki, thank you. You know me from my testimony in the past relating to climate action. And this time, I'm talking about the tree canopy. It's not really a big issue for climate action, but it is an issue that we all care about in our cities. So I want to just share a personal experience. I sent you all a copy of an email this afternoon that I sent to the planning department. Pardon me. The home across the street from us, which is on a relatively small lot compared to the others on the street, was just recently, last week demolished. And in the permitting process, I understand that two large fir trees are allowed to be taken down, but they haven't been taken down yet. And in the review of the documentation, pardon me, it's clear to me that the documentation was not well-presented and has some errors in it. But more importantly, our regulations for such removal of existing trees, what the city calls "significant trees," are pretty lax. The city only requires that 30% of the significant trees on a property remain in a construction redevelopment. So it seems like a pretty darn low bar. But in the case of this particular property across the street, it doesn't even meet that in the way that the law reads. So I think we've got two problems. First of all, we need to up the ante and improve the requirements so that it's not so easy for a developer to remove trees. And secondly, we need to do a little bit stronger review of the documentation that comes in. And I know that puts an extra burden on the city permitting process, but as occurred in this case, the presenters, in this case, an architect, did not do a good job and overstated and understated some things that would allow them to take these large trees down. And they're healthy trees, and they fit in with the neighborhood trees that are around them. So please review this, if you would. And I encourage you to make a stronger regulation so that we get well above the 30% retention. That explains why our canopy rate has been dropping in recent years, I think. Thank you for the time this evening, and best wishes for a good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cork. And that is the end of our pre-registered list. As I said, if there is anyone else connected to this meeting who would like to make oral communication to the council, please use the raise hand function or star nine if you're connected with a phone. Mayor, I do not see any additional hands.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we have four study session items tonight. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce the first one?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Where'd you go, Mr. Miyaki? I'm not hearing you.
I think he's back. I think he was moved to attendees, but now he's back.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, somehow it just switched over. Something happened there. So I'll start over again and say, yes, we have four items on a study session. And the first one is an update from King County Councilmember Reagan Dunn. Tonight, we had the privilege of hearing, having King County Councilmember Reagan Dunn join us to provide an update on the state of the county as well as activities in District 9. Just by way of background, District 9 includes South Bellevue from the Botanical Gardens through factoring parts of West Bellevue. And Councilmember Dunn has served on King County Council representing parts of Bellevue since 2005. With that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Councilmember Dunn.
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. I appreciate that. And Mayor, city council members, thanks so much for having me. It's always a privilege to come before the city and do a state-of-the-county update, as I try and do annually for all eight of the cities that I represent, just a little over a quarter of a million people, and give you a sense of sort of what's happening in my district and also as that, those activities impact Bellevue. So I represent Bellevue, Newcastle, Renton, Kent, Covington, Black Diamond, Maple Valley, Enham, Claw, all the way up to Snow Call me Pass and right down to Greenwater, Washington. They're on your way to Crystal Mountain. It's a big, it's a big district. And around, and I have to look at the new census data, I give or take 30, 32,000 people in Bellevue that I represent. So I've got a PowerPoint. Hopefully, we can get that up. And I think that these kinds of presentations lend themselves best to that. And it's my understanding that the city clerk has that charm. Okay, great. There you go. So let me go through that, and then there are their questions afterwards. Perhaps the mayor will allow an opportunity to do that. Next slide, please. So let me jump right into the COVID situation here. Obviously, we have a significant spike, the Delta variant, in King County. These numbers show the seven-day average, both with hospitalizations and deaths. Admissions to hospitals is the bottom-left chart. The positive cases on the right, and the deaths, the one that is by far the most serious, on the lower right. You'll see that we've had several waves. The Delta variant in King County, that last big spike was very significant. It continues to be, but we are beginning to see pretty strong indications that we are on the backside of that. There's a chance it bump around for a little while. But Delta, we may be working our way through Delta for a variety of reasons, including vaccinations. But I think you are, one of the points I want to make is that just a little over 5% of the world's population now has been vaccinated. I know it's shocking because it's close to 80% in King County, but because of some of the third-world countries and many of the continents across the world, the possibility for variants remains high. And I just want to raise the specter that there is a very strong possibility that we're going to have to live with this for a while. And so I'm always encouraging everyone who possibly can to get vaccinated and to have the second dose and then follow our CDC and public health guidelines to make sure that they are doing what's right for them and for their families in terms of the need to follow the science on vaccinations. Next slide, please. One of the things that is interesting to me in this COVID-19, looking at the risk of infection, hospitalization, in the past 30 days, those positive cases for vaccinated individuals is now at 31%. And so it's a little, you know, it, we are going through this time where we're studying the possibility of the effectiveness of the vaccines, the need for a third dose, as the CDC and the FDA came out with some suggestions here recently about a third dose for 65 and older, people that are 50 with high-risk situations, and those who work in professions that require it. But there's no question that vaccines dramatically reduce your hospitalizations and deaths. And that data is pretty indisputable at this time. Next slide, please. So we are, our goal was 70%. Right now, we're about 79.6% fully vaccinated for 80, around 80% then. You can see the number of doses on the left. That makes us among the two most vaccinated large counties anywhere in the United States. We really have done a good job, I think, of working in a bipartisan manner to encourage people to follow public health guidance and vaccines and get the job done. But as we know, vaccines alone aren't foolproof. We did see 31% of folks getting sick from, who did have the vaccine. So we've just got to stay on top of this very strong possibility. We're having, we're going to see additional cases moving forward. So very challenging. I think all of you, many of you have governed in various capacities for a while. This is one of the more challenging, I think, government challenges that we've had certainly in our generation to move forward to. And I think we're lucky that we are not one of these communities where your elected leaders are battling over, at least in King County, too much of what we're sort of seeing at some of the national level and some of the other states across the country. At least this far, we've been fortunate enough to sort of all get on the same page moving forward on the importance of vaccine. Next, next slide. You'll see vaccination rates across King County. And obviously, you know, very interesting. These trends are not surprising to me at all. Bellevue, Mercer Island, Issaquah, look at that, 93.6% have received one dose. I mean, that's extraordinary. But just like we see with a lot of other public health-related challenges, like teen pregnancy, like autism, like obesity, like so many other health challenges, we see South King County is lagging behind for a lot of different reasons. They're multifaceted and complicated. But I think that Bellevue can be very proud of where it is in terms of its vaccination efforts. So the city, you'll see in the Seattle Times, if you look right now, that the county will keep open and make available vaccine, mass vaccination sites for third doses, which are being recommended as well moving forward. Next slide. Working is part of the effort from the public health perspective, to make sure we get everybody vaccinated. The PPE is out, wherever we can possibly do that. We're working on things like economic responses to make sure that our economy is among, since we're one of the most vaccinated communities in America, that our economy is among the first to recover. There are studies that show that those communities that social distance better during the Spanish flu were quicker to bounce back from an economic perspective. That's empirical data, and we're trying to do that here. It was privileged to give the Bellevue Chamber or grant $25,000 to help. And Chambers have really had a tough time across the board, really across the United States, but also in King County. So we've been moving to help that in a lot of different areas. You'll see a lot of money going for eviction prevention, home grants, various types of immigration, community support, multi-language, legal aid, legal system backgrounds, a lot of work in this area to try and support our health and economic responses. And much of that, of course, is federal government dollars coming through us. So normally, we pass one biennial budget every two years. And I think we're on COVID-9, our ninth supplemental for the last year or so. Plus, we've done our biennial budget and another supplemental. So for once, maybe, your King County Council is earning its keep, and we are staying very, very busy in terms of what we are doing, our basic responsibility of appropriating the dollars that are streaming through King County. Next slide. I think, besides the actual vaccination in public health work, the eviction prevention and rental assistance, for me, is really where the rubber meets the road here. And you maybe saw last month, the Times reported that our eviction prevention and rental assistance program had only distributed 6.5 million of the 145 million that was available, 4.5%, which was shocking compared to Pierce and Sohomish counties, which were up around 50% at the time. So I put some legislation forward and some pressure on the executive branch of government to up the ability to get that money out the door. They have streamlined those efforts. They've hired some folks. My argument is, like, spend a little of that money to increase your capacity to get the rest of the money out. And I have received some pretty good news that, as of just a couple of days ago, we really increased, we're at 34.3 million at that point. But we have a lot more, long ways to go. Those are the people we need help. It's not just the tenants who can't make their rent or need help with their rent. It's also the landlords who aren't being paid rent, which are struggling. I have landlords, so you know, I have landlords who own one or two homes who aren't getting the rent, and they're on the hook for the mortgage and their utilities that are now showing up at food banks in parts of my district. It's a serious issue. The best way we can handle this is this direct subsidy from the federal government through the county and to those people that need, that are in need. Next slide, please. The King County Regional Homeless Authority, well, Mark is going to give you a good briefing on that. And I think this slide is, gives you a basic idea of the scope and what their next steps are. But I know Mark's been working hard to get his key central staff put together and is working on a plan, a regional plan, to solve a very challenging homeless situation. I look forward to hearing Mark's comments here in a few minutes. Next slide. There's some homeless legislation. There were some interesting challenges. This really doesn't necessarily fall in the category of homelessness, but I think it's more of a, more a public safety-related issue. City Hall Park became very dangerous. We had a murder there and a bunch of other crime. And we had one of our employees who had an alleged sexual assault in the bathroom, and it was real challenging. So Councilmember Jeanne Co. Wells and I are co-sponsoring some legislation that would involve a land swap to really put that park, which is owned by the city, into part of the county, King County complex so that we can use the sheriff's deputies to keep that area safe as opposed to multiple jurisdictions deciding who is supposed to enforce that sidewalk. It just makes more, more sense. We've, I proposed some homeless outreach teams. And also, we are just sort of discussing very generally what standards we might be using in unincorporated King County for the thoughtful clearing of homeless encampments as we attempt to move those individuals into wraparound services. That's a piece of legislation that was modeled after the city of Portland. And so it needs to be thoughtful and well-vetted and give essentially a due process for these public spaces that have challenges with homelessness. Next slide, please. We know that around 64 or so% of individuals who are homeless on our streets of Seattle are either actively addicted to drugs or alcohol. We know that roughly a third of the homeless individuals that die on our streets every year die as a direct result of their addiction. I was really super, and you all know, I think, this is an issue close to my heart. I am a recovering alcoholic with years of sobriety under my belt, and I've done a lot of work to help individuals who are sharing the same kinds of struggles that I went through. And one thing that I'm really proud of is we had a conference, King County's first annual conference on addiction disorders. And 200 people attended that virtually. I was just stunned at the turnout. I was expecting 30 or 40. And we talked about a lot of different strategies to move forward. We did some legislation to protect virtual recovery meetings. So a lot of AA meetings, for example, which people use to kind of keep themselves sober, and it's a support system for them. Those are online, just like what we're doing right now. And there's issues of privacy that I sort of codified in the act that I have there. Just one other thing that we were able to deliver half a million to support the recoveries, Cafe Services, that does interface with homeless individuals who also have challenges with drug or alcohol abuse. And so doing a lot of work there. This is a picture. The other day, my wife, Ashley, and I were at the Mariners game handing out Recovery for All shirts for Recovery Month there in Mariner Stadium. So we won, which was good. Next, next slide, please. Let's talk a little bit about public safety. This is sort of where the bad news is. I'm just reading the New York Times, as you know, you may know, that the, what we call the uniform crime report, UCR crime report data, came out yesterday by the FBI. It showed the all-time increase in homicides ever, the 2019 to 2020 bump, since they started keeping records in 1960. That's not good news, and it's certainly true here in King County. We are on a record this year for gun, both gun violence shootings and homicides in King County. Lots of shots fired, lots of shooting victims, a lot of homicides. You can see those graphs with those lines shooting up. Now, depending on what political party you want to assign yourself to, you're going to hear different reasons for this. The truth is, it's very complicated and multifaceted in terms of why this is happening. Part of the reason, of course, is that there is a pandemic going on. A lot of people are not in the office. There's a lot of demand and need for things that are causing, things like petty theft that escalate. You have a substantial reduction in law enforcement personnel in the community. You have double-digit increases in addiction to drugs and alcohol. All of that stuff is coming together to create, you know, a real serious increase in serious, dangerous homicides. And we got to get, got to get ahead of it. And like any issue that's complex, it's going to require multiple solutions to solve that problem. But what I think we need to do at the county level is all work together to get those numbers down and bring that back. And I really hope that we are able to all achieve that, that goal together because that's an important one. If you were to, for example, poll King County, what the two most important issues are, those poll numbers would come back, and they would be homelessness and violent crime levels. Those are the two major issues, and at the local level, let me put it that way. And I think they should be treated as such. Believe it or not, COVID is important and complicated as it is. Doesn't pull that high compared to some of the stuff that we're seeing here. So next slide, please. We are, as you know, the voters, Charter Member 5, put control, policy control of the sheriff's office in the hands of the King County Council. And the appointment process, appointed by the executive and confirmed by the King County Council. So there is an advisory committee, PSAC. So there is an advisory committee, PSAC, that is working on. Uh, providing some recommendations. It is slightly delayed, unfortunately. Uh, and we're gonna do our very best to do a nationwide search. Uh, to find a series of candidates. If I had to guess, I think we're probably gonna, uh, uh, if we do our job right, I think. Choose a major city chief of police, uh, perhaps with a diverse background who is. Both able to accept the reforms that are necessary to improve law enforcement and at the same time advocate for. Uh, his or her personnel, uh, to make sure that he supports. Uh, the important job that, uh, our law enforcement have liaising with the community and keeping the public safe. So, uh, it's gonna be interesting. I'll be very heavily engaged in that process. We want to make sure we get. We get somebody really, really good because that's, that's important, especially given the crime numbers I just talked about. Uh, next slide. Lot of public safety legislation I've been working on. Officer wellness, we got a lot of. Lot of demoralized law enforcement for a variety of reasons now, um. We have not done, when I say we generally, I mean, right now, the sheriff's office is not. Recruited and filled vacancies, uh, as aggressively as it is it could have. And there are fifty four vacant positions. It means that some of our contract cities aren't able to get officers that they want, that they need, that they budgeted for. Uh, that's not good. Um, I did that recruiter position will hopefully do a better job of bringing folks in the door. Uh, and help us out. Uh, working on a hate crimes hotline, which is really excited about that we're. Continue to improve and make better and as part of the legislative process. Uh, next slide, please. Lot of work. Here's some, uh, there you go. Uh, we've got some council members there. Absolutely. That's right there by Applebee's. In factoria, lower factoria Conrad, not upper factoria where you live, my friend. And, uh, and where Jennifer lives, that's lower fact, down there in my district, but, uh, you'll see some other money there on the left, uh. Sports grants, twenty five grand for the, I think, bold vision of the cross cultural. Uh, community center for the housing authority, uh, for the schools foundation, East Side Heritage Center, just trying to. Uh, life spring and of course the chamber which you saw before, uh, just trying to keep some of these folks afloat during these challenging times. And a retired van to the Bellevue based on profit recovery beyond. So that's cool. All right, next, next slide. We'll keep that up. And by the way, if you have questions, there's questions, uh, if you have. Issues that you think are critically in need of funding and that they are also rationally related to the covid pandemic, which is a pretty. Broad net, please do not hesitate to reach out to me and make a request. That money is going to Shoreline. Or Vashon Island or downtown Seattle. If you can articulate it to me, then my job is to advocate for and make sure that Bellevue is getting its fair share. And is those dollars can be leveraged to help that community organization in whatever way necessary. So if the. If the mayor, Mayor Robinson would allow, I'm more than happy to take questions or whatever you prefer.
Of course. Is there anybody who has a comment or a question? I see Deputy Mayor Newton House. Is that, um, Councilmember Braxton, did you raise your hand?
Sort of, but I will.
Uh, council members on, council member Lee, councilor Stokes. Go ahead, uh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilor Dunn, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, really appreciate the update and thank you so much, especially for your leadership on the, uh. Addiction, recovery and mental health programs. I think that's something surely that all the county really needs some more support and more programs and more investment in. So thank you for sharing that. A couple of quick questions in a couple of different areas. Um, so one on the, on the covid nineteen, and I don't know if King County has really studied this, um, much yet, but the thirty one percent. Of the vaccinated, um, are there any common themes that we've found so far or are they looking what the common themes might be in terms of. Age, gender, are the, are all these people vaccinated with a certain type? Um, they all Moderna versus Pfizer versus Johnson and Johnson. So that's my first question. Let me go ahead and answer that.
I thought, first of all, it's an excellent question. I mean, we, we break down the, uh. The individuals that are on that data set by race, we know that much. And I'm sure we, we also break it down by, because I've seen the, the data on, uh, infection rate for. Pfizer versus Moderna versus Johnson and Johnson. I don't have that data right now. Uh, except for the national studies that I've seen that show that, uh, that, uh, Moderna is slightly more effective. Um, uh, over a period of time. There's some interesting, interesting stuff going on. It's somewhat controversial and I'll just. Gesture in the direction that the study came out of Israel here the other day indicated that natural immunity has. Uh, significant value as well. So we're really in this data collection period that I think we need to. We need to make sure that we are, we are really carefully paying attention to it. And in my view is on this is we just need to be as transparent as we can. Um, with the public so that they can make the, the informed choices on what they. Uh, what they decide to do and what they need to do.
Indeed. Uh, next question is regarding the eviction and, um, rental assistance. Uh, so I saw that Seattle Times article. So great to hear that, uh, you're up over thirty percent now getting that money out into the community, but. I'm wondering, and if you said this number and I missed it, I apologize, but what percentage of individuals do you think could be affected? Um, and could be evicted from their, from their home if they don't receive that money in time? How big of an issue is this for, for King County in terms of the actual number?
It's a pretty significant one and I think the number council member is forty thousand people if I saw that right. It's a big, well, so if you take two point three million and divide it forty thousand, I don't know, but it's a, it's a, it's a few percent anyway. Um, and it affects tenants, it affects landlords.
Yeah.
Part of it is there's an education, uh, aspect of it, which we're obviously not doing a good job. But then you have a sort of a bureaucratic backlog for lack of a better term, which is important, I, you know. You know, in a couple of years, the, you know, the auditors are gonna go through all this data and they're gonna find all kinds of. You know, mistakes that were made, but you know, at the end of the day. Um, the federal government's spending a lot of money. What I don't want to see is, um, is people, you know. Kicked out when they had it, when there was a government lifeline here that isn't being used. So the county quite frankly needs to do a far better job than it has been doing. Granted, it's bigger than some of the other counties, but we need to get the money out the door. And at the same time, you cannot, in my opinion, and I get a little political here. Continue to, uh, continue to, uh, push that eviction deadline back. In perpetuity, given that there's these hundreds of millions of dollars of funding that's available. Because the issue, because then all of a sudden the landlords are, are now taking care of the rent when. The direct subsidy should be, in other words, the government should be the one bolstering that. So you can't have. All of that happening at the same time. So let's move, let's, let's move forward and do our job. And I'm saying the county needs to do our job better, get the money out the door.
Indeed, and we might, this might be too big of a question to answer during this session, but. Those numbers that you write a law regarding gun violence, uh, in King County truly. Um, scary, unprecedented, um, the number of shooting victims, this is the number of shots fired. Um, and then the number of homicides. Um, I don't know if you could just briefly speak to what King County hopes to do here and also. In that recruitment process of the new sheriff, how important is that going to be? Um, or or weigh into that criteria of that new hire in terms of dealing with this type of, uh, of gun violence?
Well, it's, it's really, really important. Uh, Councilor, you may have known, I, I co often ran President Bush's national effort to fight gun violence. Program called Project Safe Neighborhoods and, and, uh. That had a, that was a multifaceted strategy to reduce gun crime across the country. The worst of the offenders and we, it turns out that a small percentage of individuals are committing multiple shootings. So. You get those individuals off the street, uh, and prosecuting, you can make a big difference, but there's a lot of other ways to. And gun violence, uh, as well, uh, public service advertising, there's, uh, intervention and prevention messages that occur. You can't prosecute your way out of the problem. So it's, it's, it's bigger than that, but when it comes to the situation we have here. You have roughly two hundred and seventy Seattle police officers no longer on the force, thirty five percent of King County deputies. Uh, have now been defunded. I think unfortunately, uh, the prosecutor's office is down to a skeleton crew. And all of that combined, and when you don't have officers, it's not just. Because you can't arrest, police officers do what's called community policing. They're out there talking to individuals, talking to gang leaders, getting to know individuals, trying to reduce the violent crime. We don't have those individuals on the street and there isn't yet a, any kind of an effective, uh, it's been proposed, but. Uh, sort of, uh. Social services, social worker program that's able to make up the difference. So.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's highly political, highly partisan. The truth is, we just gotta get the. We gotta get the law enforcement part of it set up with a new sheriff.
Yeah.
Who, like I said, is able to handle all these issues and, and, uh, and then we've got other strategies we have to use as well.
Okay, I'm gonna move on here. We're gonna have to tighten up the questions just a little bit. Um, Councilmember Braxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Dunn, thanks for the update. Um, just a couple of quick questions. In terms of the homelessness slide, it was separate from the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Does that work separate or how does that work?
Yeah, so, so, so what I will continue to do as an elected official in King County is I will continue to propose. Uh, various ideas for homelessness as my independent, uh, charter office allows me to do. The, uh, homeless, uh, King County homeless, regional homeless authority can, uh. Take them for what they're worth really. They can either decide to implement them. Uh, they can decide that they're garbage, they can throw them away. Uh, and sometimes from time to time, the county council in its own, uh, authority. Uh, may decide to utilize some of those strategies moving forward. Um, and so I will just sort of showcase sort of what I, I have been working on and until Mark's group gets up. Fully staffed and fully running, I will continue to, to do that and, uh, and, uh, my hope. Is that, uh, and Mark's taken on a real tough job there and I, I know how tough it is. Uh, my hope is that, uh, he gets up and running and he comes up with a commanding strategy to reduce. Uh, the very significant homeless challenge we have, and I really hope that, uh, he is able to succeed there. So, but that's kind of the way I'm dividing my responsibilities right now, Councilmember.
Okay, um, and my second question, kind of building on that point then is, um, around substance, uh, use disorder and mental illness. Uh, what, what work is the county doing to de-stigmatize, um, substance use disorder and mental illness because. Sat in on the, um, on the town hall that, uh, Council Chair Baducci facilitated. Just saw some of the, some of the language and just in some of the other conversations, it just sort of stigmatizes substance use disorder and mental illness.
Oh, yeah, it's a great question, Councilmember. I'm super excited you asked that. So I was able to move half a million dollars into King County's. Uh, first anti-stigmatization campaign related to, uh, substance use disorders, right? Behavioral health challenges and, uh, boy, I'll tell you, I mean, I'm just gonna speak from personal experience, man. Even today, after, you know, five years almost of sobriety, I still deal with that stigmatization of people sort of. Looking at me weird about my own history. And it's even harder for people who are either active in their addiction or just in the initial stages of recovery. And, um, so we're doing a lot of work. We're just getting it off the ground. That is looking, that are looking at ways to de-stigmatize that. Look, what we want to do is let people make that transition. From those behavioral health challenges. Into an area where they are in the safe harbor of recovery or getting the kind of treatment they need. And, and I think we have something here that can be very, very exciting. Um, and we're in the initial stages of it and Councilor, if you want to be involved in it, we'd love to have you involved in it. It's as we. Sort of talk about those issues and, and, and find a softer edge because right now the stigma is just. Intense and it actually makes it worse. I think when people get down that rabbit hole and they're as low as they can go. You know, it's pretty hard to build folks back up. I mean. Quitting drinking was the hardest thing I've ever done and I can only imagine the challenges that a lot of folks are going through here in that important area.
Thank you. Uh, councilmembers on.
Yes, um, thank you, Councilmember Dunn for the update. Really appreciate it. The investments in Bellevue. And accent accelerating the rental assistance, both for the tenants and the landlords. We've been hearing a lot about. The, the cliff of the, uh, eviction moratorium and people being displaced and so appreciate it. I'm wondering, we did receive some information from Sound City Associations earlier today about some King County numbers of information. But I, I would like to receive some more specific information about, um, numbers in Bellevue of. Folks that are being served. I was also hearing that the, the, um, rental assistance is for zero to fifty percent AMI. So if you're in the fifty to eighty percent, you might be left out in the cold in terms of getting rental assistance. So I wonder if that's something. Um, don't have to describe it here, but follow up on that would be really helpful. And then to follow on to a bit of the, of the dis- de-stigmatizing substance use disorder. I was also thinking about the, the mental and behavioral health and whether there are some funds for. Uh, mental health first aid. I think that is a program that could be, uh, promoted a lot more so that. So that we can actually help our friends and neighbors ourselves instead of fully relying on the mental health professionals. So whether that is a potential area that, um, the county could put some more money into, I think. Especially coming out of covid or if it's gonna be here for a period of time, I think more and more people are gonna go through a lot more. Uh, mental health distress. And then lastly, the hate crime hotline. I really appreciate that. And I wonder if it could be expanded so it's not. Only when it's fully a crime of a, of a hate assault. But incidences, so we can better understand what's going on in our community, certainly, um, during covid. We saw a lot of the anti Asian hate and incidences in our community and to the degree that there. Can be a hotline to help the community, uh, report it so we can better understand what's going on and provide the. The support that they need. So those were, uh, a few comments and some questions.
Yeah, so real quick, Councilor was on, thank, uh, thank you. That's good stuff. Uh, let me get back to you on the rental assistance on fifty to eighty percent. Because that's a really good question. I hadn't heard that. I'm glad you brought that to my attention. Um, yeah. I mean, you know, the addiction and recovery service, the treatment services, we have that. It's, it's dramatically underfunded. There aren't enough of them. Um, in this community, like, for example, Malibu has the most number of treatment services of anywhere in the United States. Isn't that not surprising, right? We don't, we need them, uh, and, and, but I think we can fix that and I put a bunch of money in and directed some stuff at Harborview. To get more beds and treatment facilities, but the mental, and when I say, and I'm using these terms kind of. I want to be careful about the terms I'm using, but the mental health. Treatment issues, not just substance abuse, but you know, the other, the other mental health challenges. That is a system that is very close to broken across the state. And, you know, I know Mark will probably speak to this issue at some point, but, you know, that's a system that needs to be fixed. The county can do some of that work. But the jurisdiction lies within the state government. So we need to, we need to do more. I think that's maybe the toughest. Nut to crack there. And then with respect to hate crimes, yeah, the, uh, cool, uh, coolest, I guess hate and bias is now. I think gonna take over that hotline. They, they got a couple of different hotlines. We need to merge them and coordinate them. I sponsored it, we got it out of committee and then we decided to kick it back to committee to make it even better. So yes, I would love to. Um, include some of your suggestions there and really make that one good. And then data collection is important. We gotta be careful about, um, you know, anonymity and respecting people's privacy and. And, and also I, I want to be real sensitive that people don't just assume that all of a sudden. This, this number goes triage to law enforcement because there are a lot of, a lot of folks who don't trust law enforcement. So we want to be sensitive. To how we handle. I want to do it right and, uh, but I think it's something that's important and it's dramatic, like, just like human trafficking, it's dramatically. Reported, so are hate crimes. So thanks for your question, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Dunn for coming to talk to us. It, uh, gladdens me that, uh, someone like you who are raised in the Bellevue area. And now you're doing great things representing us. I'm one of the thirty thousand Bellevue residents, uh, in your district. And I really appreciate why I see the Cub Scout, you know, uh, earlier to lead the pledge. You know, the young people like them, it's gonna be responsible, you know, citizens, uh, for our future. That's, that's great. And, uh, I want to thank you also for your support of the Cross Culture Center project. Uh, because I think, you know, having a big chunk of your constituents from the South King County. You have, you face a big, big multicultural population and they're very diverse. So appreciate what you're doing. And, uh, my question, you know, a lot of question, but I want to make another comment. It really, uh, you know, your recovery, uh, from the pandemic, the economy recovery was very, uh, admirable. Uh, you know, your rental assistance program and, uh, you know, uh. I think particularly. I think particularly concerning of the owner of the properties as well, so that nobody really are in a challenging position, you know, without support. And I think that's great. And I'm impressed to see what you have done, you know, encouraging the county to do that. My my comment is, well, question maybe four years, in terms of mental health program, addiction program. And what can you do to help the city? And what the city has done in our homeless program, what can we do and learn from each other that will work together with King County and the local local cities? That we can use each other's model example, maybe with the other cities, we talk about suburban cities association. We all do things our own way. But in doing that, you know, we are learning, you know, what's the best practice? And I think that would be a very important communication, collaboration, we can work together. And we can learn from each other. We can also use the same mechanism like you as a King County transfer member to help, you know, to educate, to message, to help us to make things work better. So perhaps you can say a couple of things regarding that, the education, homeless program, housing, and so I appreciate that.
Well, let me just take on that last one. There are some treatment facilities in Bellevue that are very high quality and not well-publicized. And, you know, I will do whatever I can to direct the county's COVID funding dollars to that because we have seen a a double-digit increase in drug and alcohol addiction during the course of the pandemic. And I think we I think we generally have a recognition that we're gonna have to put services that maybe aren't popular into our communities to solve problems. And I commend many of you for the the courage you have taken recently to to cite some facilities right there in Bellevue. Addiction Recovery Treatment Centers are among that list. And and I cited one in my district not too long ago and it's turned out to be just great. And, you know, that everybody that are almost everybody, okay, everybody but one person came around to really liking it there. And so we've we've got to, we got to do some of that. So for my 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 part, I want to commit to that. And then we got to keep getting this money out the door for rental assistance. It's very, very important. And let's get everybody back to work. That's important, too. So thanks, Councilmember Lee, for your your longstanding leadership and appreciate continuing to work with you on many issues, including the Cross Cultural Center.
Yes, I remember the old days when you, you know, on the soccer team, we were working together. Anyway, thanks. Give us a good one. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, that was when I was fourteen. I think it's the last time I exercised. We're gonna work on that. Okay?
Councilmember Stokes.
You know, Councilmember Dunn, it's good to see you. I remember going out to up in the Newport area and you've brought up a big check, you know, you were some funds to help us some trails up there. And you've always been very, very aggress addressing issues in Bellevue. I appreciate that. And I really, I like, I was not quite sure how you what you were gonna approach and talk about tonight. And I I'll give you, I'll say a word that I hope you see as a very much of a positive is I think I like your, a lot of these progressive issues and 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 solutions you're talking about. And I think we're which is, we're all working together a lot better in in doing things that you're talking about. And that includes, you know, talking about accepting the necessity for police reforms and accepting the fact that we are defunding social services and human services are not funding and addressing issues. And so we take those things and put them together. And I think you're working towards and really leading in sense of how do we do that? How do we improve? And attack these issues. And then we have this issue of, you know, continuation of the COVID situation. And your strong support for the vaccinations is very welcomed. And also recognizing that it's it's a complex issue and maybe going on for a long time. I mean, it's just listening to this, I think you've presented a a kind of a overlook of all these different issues that are coming together that we're trying to deal with. And you're talking about how do we do this better? How do we work together better? And address real issues. And then talking about your own lived experience is very helpful. We all have things like that. We look at and say, okay, how can we use that as going forward? And I appreciate that very much. So I'm excited about this and we need to continually work together on those issues. Not gonna go over all of these things you've talked about because you've really laid them out there, but I do appreciate that. And I'm glad to hear that. You know, the violence thing is a lot of issues. I mean, there are too many guns, too many people use them, too much. Everybody's just kind of bizarre in this circumstances, but and and the crime rate is not going up just this last year or so. It's been coming up. And I mean, it's something we got to deal with. So I appreciate seeing how all these things come together and hopefully that what you're doing and working with the county and working with us will actually be a very positive thing moving us forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes, for your very kind words. I appreciate that.
So Councilmember Dunn, it's really great to have you here tonight. I'll just quickly underscore some things you've already said on your own. And that is just, you know, COVID has exacerbated so many of the issues that we are already struggling with, whether it's homelessness or mental health issues. It's just compounded that. And so knowing that, you know, I'm on the mid oversight committee, so I see all the data from there. And it's quite evident that you do not get progress without being housed first. You know, no matter how much money we put toward programs to help people, unless they're housed, they just cannot recover in any way. And so I I join you with this real effort to find the housing for people, create the housing, but also, as we were talking about, the rental assistance so that we don't have a whole bunch more people becoming unstably housed. And in addition to that, I would just say, you know, same-day services on the east side are critical. We do have access to services, but very few same-day services. And so, you know, telling somebody who decides one day they want to recover and they're told they can come back in a month for their appointment is just not effective. So I hope you will help us get more same-day services on the east side for the people that we serve.
Thank you, Councilmember. It's one of the things that gets me excited to do the work I do. And thanks for your kind words. Bellevue is a very well-run city. I've had the privilege of representing sixteen different cities on the county council because I represented a lot of other, the points communities for years. So we're gonna keep working on it. I'm a privilege to be able to work and represent the city of Bellevue and help your renters.
Well, thank you. We are, we're lucky to have you. And thank you for coming tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councilmembers.
Okay, great. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce the second item on our agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The next item is on the King County Regional Homeless Authority update. Tonight, we have the privilege of having CEO Dones of the King County Regional Homeless Authority provide an update to the council this evening. And just by way of background, the King County Regional Homeless Authority was established back in two thousand nineteen by way of an interlocal agreement between King County and Seattle. The authority coordinates, among many other things, policy funding and services for people experiencing homelessness in King County. So with that, I'm gonna hand this off to Lacy Jane, our Assistant Director of Intergovernmental Relations, to further introduce our introduce our guest as well as to begin the presentation. So Lacy?
Good evening, Lacy Jane Wolf, Assistant Director of Intergovernmental Relations here. So nice to see all of you. I'm very excited, I as I know all of you are, to have Mark Dones with us tonight for an update on the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Before I hand it off to Mark, I just want to briefly set the stage because there are multiple homelessness discussions taking place around the region. And it can be easy sometimes to mix them up a little bit. I know the council has recently received public comments on King County's Health Through Housing Program, which is rapidly creating sixteen hundred units of affordable housing. And that program recently purchased, announced its purchase of the Redmond Silver Cloud Facility. The program we're going to be hearing about tonight, though, the King County Regional Homelessness Authority is a separate entity created through an ILA, as City Manager Miyake mentioned, and is designed to unify and coordinate policy, funding, and services for people experiencing homelessness in King County, as City Manager said. So of course, King County Regional Homelessness Authority will have an important role in in the regional effort to address homelessness in the county as a whole, as well as in Bellevue and on the east side. Because they will be administering King County funding to our to our service providers here. And so with that in mind, Bellevue staff, I'd like to know, is regularly coordinating with Mark and Alexis, especially on east King County subregional planning, which you'll get to hear about in a minute. And that includes the great east side cities of Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Isiqua, and Mercer Island, as described in your council packet. It also includes Woodinville and Sumamish. My apologies for leaving those two fine cities out of the list. So now I would like to hand it off to Mark and their colleague Alexis to tell us more about the work of the KCRHA.
Thank you very much for that kind and comprehensive introduction. My name is Mark Dones. I am the CEO of the King County Regional Homeless Authority. I use A- than pronouns. And I truly cannot thank you enough for distinguishing that we do not run Health Through Housing. I support the program, but a lot of people talk to me about a thing I do not oversee. So thank you for providing that background. I'm here with my colleague Alexis, who serves as our subregional planning manager. And we are here to provide, as you said, an update on the authority, where we are in with regard to our broad planning and then also our subregional activities. I'm gonna speak first with regard to an overview and then pass it over to Alexis, who will go deeper into the subregional planning work and the specific work of the east side. And here are our slides. Alexis, did I leave anything out? And do you want to introduce yourself before I get started?
I'll quickly introduce myself. Thank you. Hi, everyone. So honored to be here tonight. My name is Alexis Mercedes Rink. I use she/her pronouns. And I know a number of you from my previous role at the Sound Cities Association, where I was the Human Services Policy Analyst. And now very excited to be serving as the Subregional Planning Manager, where I can continue working with thirty-eight wonderful cities that I worked with at SCA. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alexis. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna run through our scope of work, our governance, the timeline, our twenty-two priorities, and then pass it over to Alexis, who's gonna talk about subregional planning. My hope is that we will be relatively brief and leave plenty of time for you all to ask us any important questions that you have. Next slide, please. So our scope of work, again, as that really comprehensive introduction covered, is framed by the interlocal agreement that created us. So we were formed at the tail end of twenty nineteen in December through an ILA that merged the funding and policy authority of the city of Seattle and King County into a new special jurisdiction agency that has responsibility for unified planning, coordination, and dispersment of the combined funding of those two jurisdictions with the goal of ending homelessness across the region. Next slide, please. Our governance, which is a little complicated but fun, is we have a governing committee and then an implementation board. The governing committee is made up of regional electeds. So that's the King County Executive and two King County Council members, the Seattle Mayor, two Seattle Council members, three elected Sound Cities Association leaders, and three members with lived experience of homelessness. On the implementation board, which is thirteen members, which is the board to whom I directly report, it's those co-chairs who I talk to almost every day. And that board is a thirteen-member civilian board that is appointed through the governing committee but has importantly to pass through a skills matrix in order to sit on that board. So one of the things that came up in the design process of the authority, which I'll speak to briefly in a moment, is that there was a real hunger in the region for clarity around the folks who were sort of leading the work and in charge of of governing the work had expertise, right, in the things that solving homelessness requires. So in order to sit on the implementation board, you actually have to have demonstrated expertise in something like behavioral health, in substance use disorder treatment, in housing finance, in, you know, affordable housing development, like that kind of stuff, right? The goal was really to ensure that at that implementation board level, the conversation could be substantive and really policy-focused. And that, I think, has been very effective. I think that the, you know, it's important to also note that the implementation board also echoes the governing committee in having a cadre of folks who are specifically there because of not just their expertise, but because they also have lived experience of homelessness or the associated systems. We also have an advisory committee. The advisory committee serves as our HUD-required HUD-required Continuum of Care Board. So in order to draw down the HUD NOFA dollars, which make up about a third of our budget, we have to have a COC board and we are designated as the COC lead agency. This board largely focuses on the scoring criteria and application process for those HUD dollars. It is not necessarily a governing body in the way that the implementation board or governing committee are, but is really narrowly focused. My appointment comes through the implementation board and then a confirmation process at the governing committee level. And so it is in that way that I act as an appointed official for the region. Next slide, please. So this is more of the meat, I think. So the timeline of the establishment of the authority, I think, is actually quite important because it helps contextualize where we are in our work and why we're where we are in our work. So in twenty eighteen through twenty nineteen, beginning August of twenty eighteen, actually, I was actually fortunate enough to lead a team at the National Innovation Service that was engaged to evaluate the King County homelessness system and and homelessness response system and make recommendations about how to improve it. Our report of that audit came out in December of twenty eighteen and listed ten action items that we felt that the region needed to undertake in order to radically improve the state of services. Item two in that report called for the consolidation of funding and policy authority between the city of Seattle and the county into a single entity. I I want to be really clear that at the time of the issuance of that report, that was not a novel finding. But five other reports, including one by the King County Auditor, had found the same thing. What was different is that there was frankly, the political will to get it done. And so on, you know, the day that we released the report, I want to say, gosh, maybe just two days later, Executive Constantine and Mayor Durkin, you know, stood at a podium and said, you know, this is this report and and we're going to commit to getting the job done. I also want to be clear that, like, in lifting up leadership, we're not just talking about the leadership of Mayor Durkin and Executive Constantine because the creation of the the ILA had to pass through the Regional Policy Committee and a number of other important regional bodies where folks weighed in, had an opportunity to deliberate. And so it really was a testament to how the leadership in the region had shifted with regard to approaching this issue and wanting a unified response. Over the really first half, the first six months of twenty nineteen, that same team and I worked on developing the, a lot of the criteria that went into the ILA. So really focused on working with the community with providers, frontline staff, folks experiencing homelessness, regional electeds, right, to design that governance structure and to identify what skills and criteria would allow someone to sit on the implementation board, why that two-tiered governing structure, why does that make sense? How does that drive towards, you know, what the community is looking for? And then some of the core principles and standards under which the authority operates today, including, you know, a focus on ending homelessness through racial and social justice, a focus on the incorporation of the voices of people with lived experience, et cetera. In twenty nineteen, as I mentioned, in December, that legislation was signed. And the goal at that time was to have someone in my job by February or March of twenty twenty. And I actually was asked by multiple people, like, hey, do you want this job? And I said, no, no, thank you. This has been super fun. I've enjoyed this time, but I'm, I run this agency over here. Good luck. And then we had a global pandemic, right? And so the the process to select a CEO And so um the uh the process to select a CEO um uh was paused, right? Um, and uh folks across the region turned their work towards a pandemic response. And I always want to be sure um that the that when we talk about this, right, particularly in public settings, that I lift up the fact that this is not a failure of government. This is actually government appropriately prioritizing and doing the right thing, right? Um, that all the people who needed to be part of the CEO selection process needed to keep people alive. And that's what they did, right? Um, and so I really just want to make sure that, you know, for the public who's tuning in, right, that they really fully appreciate that this is the result of good work, uh not government inefficiency. The result, however, um is that that CEO selection process really didn't uh really get underway until uh the fall of twenty twenty. Um, and uh I put my hat in the ring in December of twenty one, or sorry, of twenty twenty, um because uh I saw um work that the community had really put a lot of effort and heart into, starting to to um stall a little bit, right? And I really felt like I had a moral obligation to ensure that the implementation of the authority happened. Um, I was uh advanced, uh my nomination was uh accepted in advance by the implementation board in March, um and I was confirmed by the governing committee that same week, and I began April twenty sixth of this year. I offer that context, all to say that, like, by the most generous of reads, we are a year and a half behind schedule. Um, and that's just true. Like, there is, there is no, um, there is, there is no reality in which we are not that far behind schedule. Um, again, I, it is for good reason, um but it is where we're at. Um, my focus uh since coming on board has been on staffing and uh beginning to ramp up our internal capacity around core things. So um we are expected to have a staff uh by the end of this year of about fifty five. We're at about, um, I think at the end of this week, we'll hit like eighteen. Um, so we're on our way. Um, but uh importantly, we inherited no system infrastructure from either or parent jurisdiction. So, you know, general ledger software, like grants management software, like the things you need to run a large scale agency, w- we did not have. Um, and so a significant amount of our initial work has been ramping up the capacity to do those things, procuring those systems, implementing those systems, um so that on January first, when um the entirety of the uh city of Seattle and county contracts in the homelessness space default to us to manage, um that we can actually do that. Our annualized budget at this point is around a hundred and forty million dollars, the vast majority of which goes out in uh program funding. Um, and we really, again, I I think our our uh focus has been very significantly so on ensuring that we can administer that funding in twenty twenty two with no glitches, right? Um, as our chief program officer, uh Peter Lynn often says, right, this is money that pays the rent, quite literally. Um, and so there is, there is no room for error. There is no room for a check that doesn't clear. Uh, next slide. Um, I also want to talk a little bit uh about sort of where we're headed, right? And that, um, you know, I think includes um both some of that contract conversation, but then also uh some work we've identified to pursue outside of our administrative sort of wheels of government. And then, of course, Alexis's important work on sub regional planning. Next slide. So the first thing that I will just say is that um we do not anticipate, I always start here first. We do not anticipate, and when I say do not, I mean will not, it will not happen. We will not be rebidding anything as we go into twenty two. Um, we are going to consolidate contracts, meaning if you had uh, you know, three contracts between the county and the city, you will have one with the authority. Um, but we will not be redoing anyone's scopes of work or or changing anyone's uh, you know, sort of uh award, so to speak. Um, the reason for that is we simply do not have the time, based on when I started and the staffing up, to do a competitive procurement. Um, and so as a result, we will level fund going into twenty two. Um, that is over two hundred contracts to be consolidated, and again, this annualized uh approximate a hundred and forty million dollars. Um, we will, in the first quarter of twenty two, work uh across the community to, and you know, this is part of the work that Alexis is already uh doing now, right, to develop an RFP to rebid the full system going into twenty three. So my expectation is that we will develop that RFP. We will then uh release it probably second quarter, um score it third, make awards. And when we flip the lights on the twenty three system, it will be significantly different. Um, in in what I anticipate actually is a night and day way. Um, I want to be really clear, though, that because of our commitment to community run process, because of our commitment to working alongside people and not, you know, sort of just saying, well, this is what we're doing, and, you know, good luck with it, um that my expectation is that while the system will be significantly different, I don't expect that people will be surprised, right, when they see what we bid out and how we bid it out. Um, and in fact, right, if there were surprises, that would be indicative of the of a failure, frankly, to do our job. Um, will everyone be happy with everything? No, probably not, but that's government. Uh, but they shouldn't be surprised. Um, the uh, you know, I want to say that, like, as we begin this process and and because of Alexis's thoughtful work, we are already in conversation with many of the East King County providers that will be funded um by us in twenty two and certainly would be part of any full system rebid, including, you know, Friends of Youth, Sophia Way, uh CFH, and Hope Link, right, as some some core folks um who operate on the east side. Next slide, please. Um, the next and last thing I I really want to talk about is uh our catalytic portfolio. So this is uh stuff that we are um focused on activating outside of that cycle of, you know, the administrative of government. And I want to be really clear here um that the the reason why this is so important to us and the reason why I bring it up in every presentation um is because uh we have to stop saying that this is a crisis and then saying, now, hold on for two years while we do more planning. Like, that's, that's not how you do crisis response. Um, and so if we are in a crisis, then things have to move as if we are in a crisis. And so my commitment and our agency's commitment is to step into always having an action oriented stance, even while we do the other stuff that, you know, is required for good government and good governance. Um, our three items of focus are peer navigation, uh by name lists and high quality data, and bridge housing. And so with peer navigation, what we're really focused on, so I've had the benefit of working in a number of different spaces, peer navigation is actually the gold standard in behavioral health work, uh substance use disorder work, uh gang violence work, and other space I've worked, um where you essentially say, people who have some training, but also similar life skill or or life experiences, rather, are the most skilled at helping people navigate complex situations, right? Um, we have seen this be successful over and over and over again, to the extent that it is now a Medicaid reimbursable function across many systems, right? Um, the uh, the, we also see it as as coming up over and over again in the qualitative data that emerges from folks who are experiencing homelessness, right? That, like, the the thing that seems to have the biggest impact on how rapidly they transit that experience and successfully stabilize is, do they have a trusted relationship with someone who walks the whole way with them and has some of those same experiences? And so we're really focused on uh standing up that workforce and that capacity. And our vision is that essentially, you know, pure Y would be uh assigned to encampment X, right? Um, and the six people who live in that encampment are now that person's people. And they walk alongside them all the way until they're housed, right? As opposed to the very fragmented experience of uh relational and staff touchpoints that people currently have. Um, the next thing we're really focused on is that by name lists and high quality data. So you may have heard the term uh by name list before. It's a little bit of a term of art in the homelessness space. It essentially just means, um, you know, a list of everyone who's experiencing homelessness in your jurisdiction. We want to take it a little bit farther than that, right? And so we don't just want that list of names, right? We want uh where are you? What are your needs? What is the care plan attached to those needs? And if there are voids that we are not able to meet, why not, right? Like, what is, what is the missing piece? Is it a system piece for us? Is it a connection to something? Uh, and how do we ensure that we are using that information about our ability to meet people's needs as a continuous quality improvement process, right, where we are able to lift up, here is where we're failing, and so here is where we're going to make the the solve. Um, I also want to be really, really transparent that it is that level of quality data that will allow us to best understand um what the right resource allocation is with regard to communities across the county. Um, I have a goal, our team has a goal of ensuring that people are able to access the services and supports that they need, as you were just speaking with Council Member Dunn, where they're, where they're at, right? Um, that people shouldn't need to go two, three towns over to, you know, come, come frankly, uh to downtown Seattle in order to access a support, right? Um, when the, where they experience homelessness is, you know, somewhere on the east side. I think that, like, uh, what often, though, uh complicates that conversation is it then sounds like there's some massive infrastructure that needs to be cited, right? And that I don't think is our belief. I think that, you know, fundamentally, um, the percentage of folks, right, the inflow into the population experiencing homelessness is a knowable number, right? Um, and to the extent that you can know that number, you can then build a system around it. So the example I often use is Issaquah. I don't know why. It's just, I don't know, Issaquah always comes to mind for me. Um, but, you know, so if, right, the data suggests that, you know, roughly fifty people experience significant housing instability in Issaquah per year, then what that means is that the uh, you know, uh subsystem infrastructure that you cite in Issaquah only actually has to be about for sixty people, right? Um, which is not a massive operation, right? Um, it is the capacity to respond to the, you know, what we normally see, plus a little bit of buffer in case something gets a little wacky. Um, but that we're not talking about citing seven hundred person, you know, facilities in response to, you know, a a fifty person need. Um, I I just think that's really, really important, because that is, I think, what the the purpose of the the granularity of the data is for us at a system level, is to right-size the infrastructure response across the region. The last thing that we're really focused on is bridge housing. And and um here, you know, uh I'll be brief before I hand it over to Alexis. What we've identified is that at the, at the system level, we have shelter options, and we have permanency options, and we don't actually have anything in between. And the waitlist for those permanency options can be years long. Um, and so administratively, what that means is we have told you to wait outside. Um, quite literally, right? Like, if you go uh talk to folks who are in encampments, oftentimes, particularly uh, you know, the relatively stable encampments, folks are working, they are on the housing waiting list, they are trying to get the vouchers, right? Um, but they actually don't have anywhere to be. Um, and so what we've identified is that there is a need for people or or need for uh places for folks to be housed, right, while they are waiting for whatever that appropriate next step is. Um, so ensuring that that exists and that it is a housing response and not uh, you know, a a more and more Byzantine and lengthy shelter system uh is really important for us. Um, so with that, um, I will pause and hand it over to Alexis, who uh can walk through the sub regional planning work. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much, Mark. If we could go to the next slide, please. Wonderful. Thank you. So in my role as Sub Regional Planning Manager, I'm leading ongoing equitable engagement with our jurisdictions around the region, with our providers, and with community members of lived experience and other community-based organizations, really to develop a more robust understanding of the unique assets, needs, dynamics within all of the identified subregions on this slide. And so further, what we mean by sub regional planning, there are six key components to sub regional planning. Um, next slide. Right, so um these sixteen components include, the first of which being a being able to provide a full landscape of all of our services available to folks currently experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness. And I mean this in a catalog sense, but also in a mapping sense, being able to identify where our services are by subregion. The second key component is looking at our investments and funding into service response. So looking at public, private um faith, as well as in-kind um investment into the service responses by subregion. The third key component is really digging into folks' experiences with the homelessness response system within that subregion. So depending where you are within the county, um, the type of services you're going to be able to access will look vastly different. So really looking at what it means to access services and also get referrals and then get to that referral, depending where you are in the county. And we're working collaboratively with the Lived Experience Coalition, as well as tapping into other um lived experience expertise across the region to really um better understand what this looks like. The fourth key component will really be informed by what we find in one, two, and three, and that's identifying our gaps and needs for each subregion. The fifth piece is then identifying action steps that could be taken with each in each subregion. And then um the last piece, really looking at timelines and when we could get work done. Next slide, please. So this is to give you all a flavor of what um engagement in East King County has looked like. Um, I have a standing meeting with um Eastside City Staff uh on a biweekly basis. So big thank you to the Bellevue staff that participate in those meetings. Um, the the next part of this is really digging into um providers and also community-based organizations that I've been in conversation with. Um, I'll just list a couple. You'll see some of them are explicit service providers, such as the Sophia Way, Hope Link, Congregations for the Homeless, Lifewire. Others are um just organizations that are also in, like, the human services space. So end up serving folks who are experiencing homelessness or housing instability, but maybe not an explicit homelessness service provider. Um, there are also a number of um organizations that are staffed by and serving um Black Indigenous and immigrant communities of color, um Eastside for All. And then I'm also in conversation with, for example, the Chinese Information and Service Center and the Indian American Community Services, as well as Muslim Community Resource Center. Um, I've been attending and speaking at some of the East King County coalitions and just sub regional tables that exist, such as the Eastside Human Services Forum, Eastside Interfet Social Concerns Council, and the Eastside Homelessness Advisory Committee. And then um also building our connection, add our connections to really tap into the East King County sort of lived experience community as well. Next slide, please. Uh, we also are getting out and about and in person, so trying to really visit our local service providers. We've had the pleasure of visiting with the Sophia Way and attending both at Helen Helen's place and Sophia's place. Uh, we made a visit to our Friends of Youth partners, Hope Link, um, the Overlake Christian Safe Parking Program, as well as the Lake Washington Safe Parking Program, and we were able to see the future side of the Together Center. And we have um additional plans to be visiting on the east side and some of the Bellevue providers. Next slide, please. Wonderful. So to give you all a sense of what's coming up next, we actually have our snapshot report coming out this week. Um, this is really a formal update that will be um on sub regional planning work. Um, so really, our progress updates around um the information and data we were able to gather around key components, one through three, an updated timeline with um defined subregions, and then a bit about engagement, how we're engaging, who we're engaging. Um, and further, what our strategy is to make sure that we're um tapping into voices that are not at currently at some of these sub regional tables. The other thing I note in terms of what is coming up next is um we are continuing to staff for the sub regional planning team. We actually posted last week for an East King County Sub Regional Planning Specialist position. Um, so we encourage you to share that that um opportunity through your networks as well. Um, because right now I am a sub regional planning team of one and would like to bring onboard somebody with a lot of um knowledge and expertise around the east side. And with that, I think there's one final slide, which really is just a wrap up. We'll take any questions uh that you have, and thank you so much for your time.
Wow, that was quite a presentation. I think we probably have a lot of questions. Um, so I'm gonna ask that we try to limit it to three minutes at a time, and we could go back around if we if we need to. So um I'm just going to go in order of my screen. Uh, Councilmember Zan, do you want to start us off?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, CEO Doones and Alexis for the presentation. You know, there is literally so much to do, and although it has been a year and a half delayed to get um CEO Doones on board, we're excited to partner with you and and work on these pieces. Um, I am super excited about your catalytic portfolio and the focus in these different areas. Um, a couple of of questions, and then maybe I, we will come back to more. Um, one is, as you think about the twenty twenty three and teeing up to the rebid, hopefully, it's like an open book test, meaning that the providers will be really clear about what your expectations are. So the goal is for them to be as successful as as possible in partnership with you. And so hopefully, there's not going to be uh guess of what you're expecting and that in twenty twenty two, we, they are provided every opportunity to get ready to be as successful as possible. So I would really see that as one of the key pieces. Um, the other one is in the by name list and really how we make The other one is in the by-name list and really how we make sure that the services that are needed are onsite or that there's transportation partnership available so that folks are able to get the services. I love the Peer Navigator and really that trusted connector of meeting people where they are. So thank you for that. You may or may not know that one of the things that the council's been talking about is considering a safe parking program in the city. And so I would really like to better understand, as you have done some of that engagement and outreach. I think it's great to visit some of the, the, the two programs you listed. There is a very small one at Newport Presbyterian Church in Bellevue. And in addition to that, I think there's lots of vehicle dwellings that are not part of a safe parking program. So to the degree we understand how to meet them where they are and transition into, um, a, a space where they are exiting homelessness into, um, housing as well. So anyway, I think maybe I'll stop there so that you can respond and we can go back around with other questions.
Thank you, councilmember. I will, uh, try to be brief. Open book tests like had me, I have, I had a flashback to genetics, which is like, there was a brutal open book test. So I actually don't want anything like that. We absolutely want the process, um, to be as, um, uh, transparent and inclusive as possible, right? So like, um, our goal is that when that, uh, you know, 23 RFP is out, that people see not just their feedback, but where they fit, right, inside of it. And they're like, oh, that's the thing that I do really well, and that's exactly where I should be applying. And that's exactly where, you know, we fit inside this, you know, sort of reimagined system. We do not want people, um, to feel, uh, boxed out or, um, that the redesign is, um, uh, you know, punitive or cabalish and it, you know, murky, right? None of that. And so we'll really be working, uh, really closely with our provider partners to ensure that that is the case. I, uh, will say that, um, with regard to vehicular residency, um, this is, uh, something that's a little bit near and dear to me, actually. Alexis and, uh, and I actually did, um, about a week of, uh, concentrated outreach to, uh, safe parking programs and people living in vehicles across the county, including some just dedicated street outreach to folks who are living in RVs, to have conversations about like, what are, what are your needs? And I, I think, I don't think I mentioned this, I'm an anthropologist by training, and so like, I don't, like, I actually don't know how to think unless I am talking to people, like. And so, so much of I think what you'll see from us is, you know, a posture of like, we do not know every answer. That is safe and fine, right? Like, um, the, the, how we get our jobs done is by figuring out who to go talk to and how to bring that back and weave it into our work. So, um, we've done quite a bit of thinking, um, about, uh, safe parking, um, the differences in need spectrums between people who are living in cars versus people who are living in RVs, right? How best to tailor programming and response to those two very different populations? And some preliminary work around even like the demographic skewing that happens inside who lives in a car versus who lives in an RV. And so all of that, um, is probably not to go over right now, but we'd be more than happy, uh, to come back and provide a briefing to you or anyone else who is interested in that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Both for the presentation, it's great to see you here. This city has been, and this council has been very engaged in homeless response issues for the past several years. And we're really proud of the work we're doing on the Congregations for the Homeless Shelter, the Plymouth Supporting Housing Project, and our support for Sophia Way and others. So, um, there's a lot to be done. We also have a very strong track record of being a strong regional partner to many, um, other agencies within the county and the greater region. So my question for you is, um, how will KCRHA collaborate with cities that don't become members? Because as we sit here today, SCA has three seats on the board. None of those are held by Bellevue, uh, councilmembers. So how do we have a say and, and, um, how are you going to engage with us? And I think this is a great first step to have you here, but, but I'd really like to hear more about that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can speak, uh, to that, and Alexis, feel free to, to chime in at any point. You know, I think that like, um, I come from a, a school of thought that is, um, more inside of an organizing framework. And so I think about like, how do we build a relationship as opposed to touch point, right? And so I, you know, I have been, um, uh, you know, focused on, on that as our, our, how, how we engage folks, right? So like Alexis's work, um, I, you know, I, I will defer to staff for on this call, but Alexis's work is, I think, deeply relational, right? Like she is very focused on, um, never a touch point, always a conversation. Um, and so has been, um, very steadily engaged with Eastside Human Service Planners and Staff in, uh, you know, recurring monthlies. I think, don't you have a weekly with some folks?
We have a bi-weekly, and we also send out a weekly email update to all regional partners and seek feedback through that channel as well.
So, thank you, Alexis. So, uh, so our focus is really on, on making sure that like, it isn't a check the box, right? But that we are in active conversation as we are doing the work. To the extent, right, that like, um, from, uh, the perspective of engaging electeds, that any of you all would like to be, um, more routinely briefed or more routinely brought in, like more than happy to do that. I, you know, there's no, um, the only barrier is time, but, but we can solve that, we can work that. You know, I, I really want to, uh, you know, make sure that there is nothing sort of between us and you and like your partnership and your understanding of what we're doing. I think that's particularly important because I will say that, you know, we do want other folks to subscribe to the ILA, right? And the, the purpose of that is not actually like, you know, there, there's more money out there, we can grow the budget, that's cool. But to be honest, like, how are we really going to grow the budget is through like state and federal channels? Because we need a lot of money. So like, I'm actually not concerned about like, well, how do I get access to the, the Bellevue dollar? I am concerned about how we get access to the Bellevue political will, right? And that to me is, is the more important question is how do we ensure that we are walking alongside you? And, and really involving you in the conversation in a way that you're like, oh, I know what they're doing and I know what they're about. Because my hope is that the authority becomes not just the, the vehicle for our financing, but the vehicle for our community will, right? Like that this is the place where we come to solve what has felt intractable in our community. And, and that I think, at least on our team, we recognize as a problem that is deeply solvable, but requires that we all be solving it, right? Um, and that it isn't just a question of the authority staff or, you know, uh, you know, King County Council or Bellevue Council or Red, like everyone has to, to be part of it in order for it to be successful. And so, I mean, you know, that, that is, um, my, my hope and my aspiration. And I, and I truly, to any of you, right, at any point in time, if you have any desire, um, for an independent briefing, to ask deeper questions, to like, talk about something you saw that you think might work, like, just please reach out and we will make ourselves available.
Thank you. I think it, I think it is really important that we walk alongside each other, particularly when we have emergencies like, uh, severe weather events where we're going to need to be coordinating. So thank you, I really appreciate this conversation.
Thank you.
CEO Doones, I just, it's nice to meet you finally, and I know that, um, I've been looking forward to meeting you and seeing Alexis in her new role as well. You know, just personally, I, I would love Bellevue to have their own seat at this table. You know, I think during the workday, we are the second largest city in Washington State. So I think we have a lot to represent and a lot to say. And, um, you know, I look at the agencies that are doing tremendous work with the very small budget that they get. And so I think a lot of them feel that if they could just expand on their resources, they could take care of the problem a whole lot better. I think it's going to be really important for there to be, uh, coalescence of efforts and energy and funding to all the cities and all the, in, in this region, so that we're all rowing in the same direction. But I think that the agencies that are working right now with minimal funding are doing a tremendous job. Two things I would like you to consider, uh, since I don't have a seat at the table, I can't tell you at the table, is, uh, the, in Los Angeles, they have something called an Angelino card. And I don't know if you've heard of that, but it's using blockchain technology to protect people's privacy, track, uh, the services that they're receiving and treatments and, and making sure they have money for essentials. And, um, and putting limits on how that money can be spent and who can spend it. So it'd be really interesting, I think, to look into doing something like that for the region. What was my second one? Oh, I just think, uh, looking at homelessness through a healthcare lens. You know, I, I feel like, um, you see people in crisis, absolute crisis, refusing care. And you don't let a patient in diabetic shock refuse care. You know, you, you give them the help they need until they have power of choice and then help them make good decisions. It seems like we were, we're erring on the side of, um, not recognizing medic, the medical crisis that homelessness can be for some individuals. So I hope that we're, we're able to find a compassionate way to address that challenge.
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I would certainly be open to, to, um, beginning to explore and, and offline conversation about how to, how to bring you all closer in terms of the, you know, various tables that, that are, are part of our tables. I think that, um, uh, on the blockchain front, I will say that in the report that we authored, I believe it is Action Item Five, um, calls for a comprehensive digital transformation of the ecosystem through which people move, and specifically looked at blockchain. I think that we are, um, a long way from implementation of that. But, uh, but I, but I think, I, I mean, like, yes, right? Like, is that like, we do need a much more cutting-edge approach to how people are able to manage their personal health information and data inside the ecosystem that is the homelessness response system, right? Um, and so certainly I think that will be part of the conversation as we step into 23, um, and something that we will try to be figuring out how we resource, frankly. And the last thing that I'll just say is, you know, I've, I've been, uh, open about this, so I don't have a problem sharing it here. But like, you know, so I have a history of some pretty significant mental health stuff. I was forcibly institutionalized, uh, twice in my life. And I, uh, I think that like, what is it really critical? I mean, and, and right, like, those, those times saved my life, right? But why they were, uh, helpful is that what was on the other side of that forcible hospitalization was actually therapeutic. And much of what we have is, is not. And so, you know, one of the things that our team is talking about is, uh, what we call our high acuity folks, which are, are, I think precisely who you're talking about, right? Like folks who might have, uh, co-occurring disorders with a psychotic spectrum illness, and then also maybe, you know, using amphetamines, for example, right? And the, the simple reality is that right now, we literally have no place for a person like that to, to go. And so we are really focused on developing, um, what we call a high acuity response system, um, that is really narrowly tailored to the needs of those folks and is appro, appropriate at both its like, you know, healing vibe, for lack of a better term, and its literal therapeutic supports, right? Like the staffing that goes into it is, is, has to be really different than how we have staffed other kinds of, of, uh, response spaces. And would certainly, again, be very open to having continued conversation with you. And, you know, if that's, uh, uh, an issue area that you're particularly interested in, can, uh, provide you much, uh, deeper read-in on what we're thinking and get your insights as well.
Thank you so much. I love where you're going with that. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you, uh, CEO Doones. I, I'm really glad to meet you, um, and I certainly appreciated your description of the, the, uh, organizations that have been put together. As you know, uh, I was on the regional, and I'm on the Regional Policy Committee, and actually, um, I can take a lot of credit for it being formed the way it is, where we put the policy people in the policy roles and, and, um, uh, you know, put implementation as where the action is. And I, I think, and I'm, it's exciting the way you put that together, and, and that's, that's what I had hoped we would do. And, um, so I'm, I'm very excited about seeing this going forward. And, and I congratulate you on, and then the whole group of doing that and, and recognizing. I think it's one of these that is going, something's going to work. You know, there were some comments about, uh, Seattle had, uh, you know, homeless issues or problems, and they were going to solve it in 10 years. Well, they never had a system to work. This is one I believe that we can make work. And when I say we, I understand the concerns about us not having a seat at the table. We have a seat at the table, we're in a representative group, we are part of SCA, and we have three members, and we will have contact with you. You're not going to sit in a little office over here, as you're saying, and just listen to a certain group. So we can work on that. And I think, um, one of the things that's been interesting too is that actually we have not been as engaged as we could be because it's interesting that a lot of the cities in the subregional part are doing things that we need to be doing that Bellevue hasn't been doing. And that's good. I mean, you know, we do a lot of things that they don't do. So I think it's, it's, you're opening it up, and I, that's the thing that I, I got from this. And I've worked with Alexis, and she's really glad to see you in this role, uh, you know, with SCA. And, uh, so I, I'm excited about it. I think we have the opportunity to do this, and I think Bellevue can be a, a leader and can be a great contributor to this. And your openness and your, uh, explanations and working with us and our staff, working with your staff, I think can get us where we want to go. I mean, there's a lot of other stuff to talk about, but I, I just really think this is very exciting, and particularly on the regional, the subregional piece, we'll be at that table. I mean, that's going to be where the action is really. So, um, I think that's what we need to focus on and, um, work with these other cities. And we have a great, actually working relationship with all the cities around us. You know, we have, uh, you know, economic, um, groups, we have all kinds of things working together. But I think this is, is a, it, we've needed a structure that makes sense, that brings the right people in, and then gives everybody a role, and we're ready to, to go into that. So I don't have any real questions to ask because you've covered a lot of stuff, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of other conversations. But I am, I'm really excited and, um, hopefully, I think we can, this will help Bellevue really take great strides too. We all need to push each other, we all need to work together with each other to move forward. So I'm excited about it and, uh, appreciate it and look forward to more conversations with you. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Good to see you again.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Well, Mark, you are amazing, very impressive. I really, uh, appreciate, yeah, getting to listen to you and know you. And obviously Alexis, uh, thank you for coming. You know, we don't know, I personally don't know that much about you. We haven't reacted, interacted before, you know, this, uh, so we, in a short time, you know, it's like, what, nine months since you became the CEO? I really appreciate your approach. And, yeah, you, 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 is a great, very difficult top, you know, issue, obviously, it's a very important issue. And, uh, you are pragmatic, at the same time as innovative. You know, you have to, uh, address the homeless response that has to be done. At the same time, you have this catalytic portfolio, which is really, uh, startup mentality, right? You gotta be innovative, you have to be good response. And depending, because you're working so many jurisdictions, different, different way of doing things. Bellevue has been doing a lot of the stuff that, you know, we believe are very successful. Most of the nonprofits you mentioned, they have been longtime Bellevue institutions. If that's how we do our things, we work with partners, we, we're nonprofits, and we are the catalyst. The nonprofits are the implementers, you know, they have to get the job done. And then this is a great model. To do that, we have to, like you said, I, I love the word, we have to walk alongside, we have to work together. And, uh, you know, I, and the thing that you're talking about to implement, uh, you know, including high-quality data, that's wonderful, because in order to work with partners, you gotta know what the real information, how to, to, to address the pragmatic things. Otherwise, you're just going to be talking, you know, i- into the wall. It doesn't address the real issue. So I, I really appreciate. And the program you talk about, again, another one's peer navigation and outreach, you know, that's important. What, what do you do that for? It's what you said, build relationships, right? Engage individuals. And more importantly, you know, it's, I want to use to say that and then give you an example. One-on-one engagement relationship. Oftentimes, when organizations work together, you know, you, it's, you only have one-on-one with the, a few people doing that. Most of people just are there busy doing whatever they're doing. But really, they don't understand. You know, we have a great program uh by Congregation for Homeless year-round, you know, the churches. We sponsor, we house the homeless man in our church for a month. And recently, I was very fortunate to be involved one. And uh, it, the church did wonderful. We have lots of parishioners cook food, prepare, make a welcoming, and we have lots of people that came, you know, to, and we we house the people there. So we have one-day event. And so I was there, I was one of the parishioners. But most of the time, the homeless people, they just sat by themselves. They were just by themselves. Nobody really sat with them and really feel comfortable. Say, hey, what's going on? How are you? We, you know, find out more about them. And so, you know, I I was, I had a good fortune that I was able to do some of that. I was there. You know, as a politician, I I love to talk to people. I like to build relationships. And, you know, and uh, they they they've already told me afterwards, you know, someone appreciated it as well. You know, this this guy made my day because we actually had a chance and had a conversation. And I knew some of these folks in Bellevue programs. We used to have Christmas events, and we have homeless people. And they live in the cars, and they like to come to Bellevue because they felt Bellevue is the safe place to be. You know, a better, better environment. So it's knowing people, like what you're talking about. So this is what we really wanted to look for with Bellevue. We have great nonprofits, great organizations. Arch, you mentioned, that's another program that's been existing for thirty years. And they did housing program, they ho- they house so, they work Sophia Way. They work with the YWCA, provide homes for families, for women, for children. So I think we are progressing, and we're now gonna do a a permanent men's shelter in Bellevue with all the, you know, uh, wraparound services. And I think this is really very good, wonderful model. But it begins, like you're saying, it's one-on-one relationship, walk, walk, walking alongside. So we look forward to Bellevue, uh, you know, whatever we can do, which have proven to be successful or other things we can do to make it even more successful. Uh, I I really am excited, you know, you you you, you you bring in the realities, but then you say, hey, let's not be limited by, you know, institutions, organization, especially the government. Sometimes government is very cumbersome.
Conrad, uh, Councilmember.
I really want to emphasize that. I want to thank you and take, take advantage of our Bellevue ability and work with you. Looking forward to doing it with you personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, Councilmember Bart Stale.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, and uh, CEO Doams, good to see you. Alexis, as Councilmember Stokes said, good to see you in your new role. So, thank you, thank you both for the work that you're doing. Um, really excited about the outreach that you did to the uh vehicle residents. As a, as a, as a researcher who engages with people, love that, love how you're using that to shape the work that you're doing there. Question in terms of, you mentioned, so the purpose of the uh Regional Homelessness Authority is coordinating policy services and funding. I hear the emphasis on data. Do you see um maybe down the road, I hear you on the capacity limitations right now, but centralizing data um fr- from across the region? Because right now, it's really fragmented and hard to tell sort of what this, what the current situation is. I know we have the one-night count, but in, you know, as a, okay, all right, cool. I look forward to hearing about that one. Um, but I think that would be really awesome to to have that centralized. And then I have a, one other question that I wanted to, what I, part of what I hear also as the Regional Homelessness Authority is something similar to the Puget Sound Regional Council. So where they review the city's comprehensive plans to make sure that there's alignment across the region. And I, and I hear you on the relationship building, and I think that's important. Longer term, do you um see maybe getting to a point where maybe each city in, within the framework, framework of the sub-regional planning, has their own strategy for how they are going to respond to homelessness and then reviewed by the Regional Homelessness Authority to make sure that there is that alignment? To whatever degree there's, you know, accountability, right, like across, like you could, you say, hey, we're just gonna review it and provide recommendations all the way to, hey, we're gonna do this and to get funding, you're gonna need to align. Just trying to figure out maybe what the future looks like there. Last comment, Samaritan. I don't know if you've heard of this app, since we're talking about uh technology, but you have heard about it. It's a really cool app. I've been trying to get Jonathan to bring it on to the east side, but I know he's going to other places in the uh in the country, so.
Um, I, thank you, Councilmember. Um, so on the data piece, um, why I shook my head about the one-night count? Um, I will start there. The one-night count is terrible methodology. Like, it is in no way, shape, or form, like, and and I will be, I'd like, I've worked in this field for over a decade, right? We all know the one-night count is bad. We all know it doesn't make sense. And I feel like, you know, I've worked, I've worked at every single level of government and like, have have yet to find the lever that moves the feds away from, you know, and I literally had this conversation not two weeks ago with uh one of our federal partners of like, hey, new administration, let's try it again. Like, this is bad. And like, if we have to do it, at least let's not give it marquee billing, right? Like, if if we don't wanna go change the legislation, we've all been in a place where we don't wanna change some legislation. But like, let's not hold it up in lights like it's true. Um, and so what I will say here, as I have said across uh in every, every opportunity, right, is the number of people experiencing homelessness in the county far exceeds um what we see in the one-night count. And I believe we actually will be able to wrap our arms around like what a more realistic uh approximation is in the next, like, hmm, four-ish weeks, I hope. But um, uh, in the interim, I will simply say that, like, one of the reasons why when people step outside, they're like, this seems like it's not great and maybe worse, right? Is because it is. Like, that is true. Um, and like, I think it's just critical, right? That like, that we acknowledge that like, what people see and experience, right? When they're like, I'm concerned about this, right, comes from an actual place. Um, and it is not just, you know, sort of, um, you know, I think part of the reason why this conversation is often very toxic, right? Is it's like, it feels difficult to acknowledge that things are bad without that seeming to be some sort of um, I don't know, failure of a proper politic, to be honest, right? Um, it is quite bad right now. It's just quite bad. Like, I am, I like, I am, uh, you know, on record as being as progressive as progressive can be. It is very bad. It has gotten worse. That is true. And the one-night count is a, is a terrible way of talking about what is actually happening because the variables that lead into what, like, how many people you can connect with in that given timeframe are so complex as to verge on, you know, uncontrollable, right? Um, I think that there is a, a path forward that we are uh looking at, right? That looks at um other data sets as how we arrive at a number and then uses the one-night count as an opportunity to do qualitative data collection with, in particular, our unsheltered folks, right? So that we are saying, we should still go outside and talk to people. That's not bad, right? But like, nose-counting is a waste of everybody's time. So I will simply offer that as sort of the broad context around the one-night count. And apologies, that gets me a little riled up. And then um, on the um, on the uh particulars of um how we might integrate the data, I think that is um absolutely for us um a near-term. But we we can't, like, we can't operate inside the level of data fragmentation that we currently have. It makes it impossible to do planning. It makes it impossible. Like, uh, we need to be able to get to a point where we can quite literally heat map the county and see how many people with what needs are where, right? Because our job as county, you know, county administrators is actually quite simple in some ways, right? Like, we are responsible for a set pot of resources, and we have to deploy them in accordance with need across a specific geography, right? Like, that's kind of, that's it, right? You can't do that if you don't know where the needs are and what they are. And the only way we're really gonna be able to do that is by um bridging um that data into uh a more uniform and centralized repository. And so we need to figure that out. We're trying to partner um in candor. We're trying to partner with some of our larger tech friends um to help us do the database architecture. We can maintain it, but we don't have the capacity to design it, right? Um, and so our hope is that that will be um part of what we can get done in the next three-quarters-ish so that we can online something substantive and then begin to pull the information into it in a comprehensive way.
Thank you. And then can I follow up on my last, my last point? I'm there. Okay. Thank you. In terms of the integration within the cities, do you foresee sort of using the sub-regional planning framework to then encourage uh cities having a strategy or plan around homelessness that fits within that framework and sort of aligns in some way? So what might that look like?
Yes, I apologize, Councilmember. I got so wound up about the one-night count that I absolutely forgot the third question you asked me. So, so uh, uh, I I will be honest, I don't know. And and part of the reason why I don't know is because I, I, I think that the relationship of do a plan and alignment and then we check it, it, to me, that feels um I I don't like the hierarchical or power dynamic that that sets up. It feels like it, it feels like it, it separates us from our idea of being able to walk alongside, right? And so there is a, there's an efficiency win in that kind of architecture. Um, but I don't know if the relational win is that solid. And so I think like for, for me personally, um, and obviously, you know, Alexis will deeply inform the overall arc of this. Um, I think we wanna get through this first twenty-four months in a solid walk alongside, right? Um, and then if what comes after that is, okay, now we can iterate from this stable place, this foundation of knowing each other and trusting each other, right? So it doesn't feel like you're turning in homework to be checked, um, but actually feels like we are collaborating on doing something. Then I think that, like, you know, we'd be happy to move in that direction. I just don't ever wanna lose the, the working together as opposed to defaulting back into sort of bureaucratic hierarchy.
Sounds good to me. Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I know time is uh short on this uh study session tonight. But um, CEO Doams and also Alexis, thank you so much for being here. It's been very informative, uh, like others have mentioned. A great way to get to uh know you a little bit better. I'm starting understanding how your, your approach uh to this very big uh topic, very big issue, as 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 you, as you mentioned numerous times. And especially having only been in this role for about five months, I can appreciate um, you know, the, 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 the approach you're taking. And I, and I think that the data-driven approach and uh some of the other questions mentioned before, it's been a good conversation. I think it's been very, very instructive. Two quick questions for me, uh, which may be uh way too early for you to answer. But you did mention um that your, your current operating budget, about a hundred and forty million. Um, but then you also mentioned that's w- not enough. You need a lot more money. I'm just curious if if you've come to any range in terms of what you think it's going to take, how you're gonna get that money and where that money's gonna go, and how you're gonna build out the um, uh, the, the infrastructure of this organization. And then second question will be, and and this is something as liaison to the Human Services Commission. We're always um, al- always, always debating and 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 uh trying to get to that right point. And I really think it's um, it's an opportunity for us to work together. Because we're always talking about how can we improve outreach to um communities of color, especially those that are underserved in our community. Uh, I don't think we do a good job with that. We need to improve. And I would, I would love that collaboration with your organization in order to figure that out and improve how we do that. Because we've got some, as you've mentioned before, we've got some great organizations and providers on the east side. Some that I'm very intimate with, having served on the Board of uh of LifeWire and also the Sophia Way. So even at that level, we continue to ask this question, how can we improve that outreach? How can we better serve the underserved in our community? So I'll leave you with those two questions, but again, thank you for being here tonight.
No problem. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I uh, on, on the budget, yeah, I have some ideas. So my suspicion is that um if we were at scale, our operating budget would probably be close to two and a half to three times what it is. Um, and uh, I think that there are a number of one-time costs um that, you know, if frankly, if if we did them solidly at scale from the start, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. Um, particularly when we talk about, you know, so when we talk about bridge housing, for example, the fastest way to do that is an acquisition strategy. Um, and uh, and again, it's, it's in part because things that are being developed, it takes years for them sometimes to come online, right? Um, and so when we talk about one-time acquisition strategies at the scale of the need, right? So we've mapped what it would cost to generate around five thousand units um or beds, right, in the bridge housing space um across the county, um, and that runs the tune of around eight hundred million dollars. Um, and so, a- and I wanna be really clear, um, because oftentimes people are like, oh, well, how would you? That housing stock exists, like, it is there. And and it would, it actually wouldn't be a significant market disruption for us to acquire it, right? Like, um, it it is, it is, uh, it's just expensive, as we all know. It is expensive to live around here. Um, and so it is not the question of is the uh, is the, are the structures available? It's not the question of will this, you know, do significant damage to the market if we, you know, move into it in this way? It's simply a question of of the um, uh, capital necessary to to run that kind of one-time uh acquisition. I think what we're obviously looking at is, um, you know, in the absence of that kind of capital, how do we uh do some focused acquisition work, again, around some of our folks who have nothing, right? Like, our high-acuity folks, um, and uh ensure that we are spinning up um, uh, those kinds of supports first and foremost. Um, I will say, uh, on the, um, on the second uh question, um, you know, I think that the um, we have an explicit mandate to do our work uh with a focus on, on racial justice and social equity, um, acknowledging the disproportionate impact of homelessness on uh folks of color, uh, trans folks and non-binary folks, folks, LGBT folks broadly, but in particular those populations, et cetera, um, our native populations. And so we are really um looking to, and and my colleague Erin Bryant Thomas, who's our Director of Equity and Justice, um, is really focused on he- helping to weave those kinds of strategies into everything that we do. Um, and that we'd be more than happy to have that follow-up conversation and think about how partnership uh between us might look. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Mark and Alexis, for coming and speaking with us tonight. It's just been uh a great introduction to you and to the work that you're doing. And we're very, all, obviously, very interested in working with you and seeing this be a success for the region. So uh, ho- hopefully, we'll uh have an opportunity to speak with you again soon. If we, if I call on you councilmembers on, I'm gonna call on everybody. So is there something that you can take offline or is something you wanna ask now at the meeting?
Well, I thought when we were going around that I kept my remarks brief because we were gonna be the go-around.
All right, all right. You may begin. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to really acknowledge the one-night count, having done that twice, how ineffective that is to find people between two and six in the morning. So my question is, as you think about the, the name list and the database architecture, how we might be able to come up with some common definitions? So as we try to collect data amongst the different entities, that we actually better understand what's going on? Because if we have, have different definitions, it's, can be really challenging to um aggregate data or disaggregate to better understand, especially as we focus on our people of color. And the one I really wanna call out, when we think about our LBGTQ community, is our trans community. So when we think about shelters, right, there are men's shelter, there's women's shelter. So if you're, if you're transitioning, where do you belong when you, if you're trying to exit homelessness? So that's an area that I'm very concerned about, how we align the, the need in our community with the capacity. So I'm concerned about, we hear from couples that are experiencing homelessness. And so in order to be housed, you have to split up. If you have a supportive animal, a beloved pet, then, you know, do you end up not being able to be served? So I think there's a number of areas that are gaps in our community, and to the degree that we can work on that. And then um, my- And then my, I think in our materials, you talked about finalizing the subregional in March. And I'd like to understand a bit more about kind of the process map to get from now to, to March, because that's only six months away and there's a lot to do. And then, yeah, there was one more piece that, and my brain kind of stopped. I can't remember what exactly it was I was going to ask on that last piece. But if you could help with the timing, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. Alexis can speak to the timing component. I will say, you know, so data standardization is near and dear to my heart. There's a lot of methods work over the course of my career. It's not that the metric, it's not that the, so there are two components, right? Like when you talk about data standardization, there is the, for lack of a better term, well, this is, this is actually the term, there's the nomenclature in the dataset, right? Like what are things called? And then there's the method by which it's produced or, or pulled in, right? We need to standardize both. And it's explicitly in our work plan to do so. So the authority is responsible for generating performance measurement standards within 18 months of my hire. So around this time next year, we will be putting out our performance measurement standards. Frankly, that will then fold into our contracting mechanisms and sort of, you know, bind the whole system into a coherent data apparatus. And so I think that has long been recognized as a core difficulty. There are definitional difficulties all across the homelessness system that start at the federal level with different definitions in, in federal language. We've done a fair amount of work locally to smooth those out over the years as it stands. We can actually take the final step now that the authority has the, the span of control in order to do that, which actually to the mayor's point, one of the things that we noted in our report from 2018 was that part of the difficulty in doing any comprehensive digital work was that there was no comprehensive, like, like in order to do that, you do need standardized data elements, right? And because those data elements were not standardized across the system, you couldn't implement any sort of span of digital response, because it would always break down as soon as it hit a dataset that had different elements inside it, right? So that is something certainly that we're going to be focused on. With regard to the, you know, as an, as a queer, non-binary person, I, I, you know, I think that like what you've said about the, the lack of responsiveness of our shelter system for our trans and non-binary folks is felt for me. I think that there are a number of ways that we can improve that. But I, again, I will, I will be clear, those are things that cost money. And so when we talk, I've, I've actually, I was on the board of a youth shelter in Cambridge, Massachusetts way back when, that through a round of capital development was able to acquire and then contract with some architects who built out a new space. And they specifically said, you know, we work with a lot of LGBT young people. Help us build a truly gender-neutral space, right? That's a thing you can do, but you kind, you kind of got to start over, right? Like our spaces are not constructed in that way through that thought process. And so, you know, it, the possibility exists in terms of the design criteria and the capacity to execute on them. But it requires a level of investment that we have not historically made. And then, you know, the last thing and I'll say on that is, you know, you touched briefly on a couples and pets. In this space, I think that like, you know, as we have moved towards non-congregate shelter as the sort of rule of the land inside the pandemic, we've been able to do better across all these fronts. And that is in part because the way that we were doing shelter before was not dignity-based and was in fact quite inhumane. And so the bottom line, right, is that when we move towards these kinds of a room with a door, right? It, it creates all kinds of different possibilities. And so we have been able to bring in couples, we have been able to bring in pets, right? Because we have been able to provide people with that little bit of space that's, that's theirs, right? And that has been transformative at the sites that have that capacity to respond to those needs. And I think that what we would like to see is that that become the floor and then we build up from there.
Thank you.
Alexis, is there anything you want to say on timeline?
Absolutely. Thank you for your question, council members on. With timelines and how we're moving forward with subregional planning, interesting kind of time to bring this up because the snapshot report, which is coming out this week, will actually detail the different phases as we build towards plans. What I would like to note is the inter-local agreement actually states that a larger strategic plan, the authority needs to deliver on, and that will be required to be delivered in August 2022. Subregional planning is folded into that body of work. And so if that kind of gives you a sense of like a, a deadline, we have about a year as we're really working towards a larger strategic plan and subregional planning will be a part of that. So happy to come back and talk more about the kind of revised timeline that we'll be talking about with subregional planning, specific to subregional planning. But overall, that kind of is the timeline that we're working with.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
I don't feel the need to go around again.
Okay, councilmember Stokes.
I, I think we're through.
Okay, councilmember Lee.
I have a quick question about data. I, I've been involved with the one-night count before and I realize it's not the, it's a good methodology. You know, especially when you mentioned when you were talking about using it for rightsizing facilities, which is very important. But what, just briefly, but we don't need to go into all the detail. What, what would be your estimate of improvement, but a quick description?
For the, for the count itself or for way, other ways to collect data? I apologize. Other ways to collect data is what I think you're saying. You're on mute.
Oh, sorry. Other ways to collect.
Yeah, so, um, so we actually, so we have something called HMIS or the Homeless Management Information System, which is a federally mandated system, which touches everything that is publicly funded and provides supports to folks experiencing homelessness and actually some things that are privately funded, although it is an opt-in, right? And so just through that system alone, we have a, a better window into the number of people who access our services and supports per year. You can also index, and this is some fantastic work that the county has done. You can index what's in HMIS against what's in the behavioral health system, against what's in potentially Medicaid. Like, so there are ways to sort of bridge the different datasets along the access of people's personal identifying information or unique identifying codes and then create a comprehensive look at like who is out there and what things are they touching with what needs. I think that that, tho- those kinds of data initiatives would be the way to get a solid number.
Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Barxdale, any other comments or questions?
Questions? Just really love hearing how you're going to be, how you're going to integrate the data. Been talking about it for a little while in the city, so really appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor.
No other questions or comments or anything.
Okay, great. Well, thank you again, and we look forward to talking with you and listening to you soon.
Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a break. It's almost 8:20. We will reconvene at 8:30. All right. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce this next item?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, council member. The next item is Cascade Waterlines briefing on the establishment of the Water Supply Development Fund. This is specifically related to a proposed future water supply investment. Specifically tonight, you're going to hear about Cascade's future water supply scenarios, funding strategy options and impacts to Bellevue. And you'll have the ability to ask questions this evening. Staff will bring this topic back at a future council meeting soon to answer any additional questions you might have and as well as to provide feedback to councilmember Stokes, Bellevue's representative on the Cascade Board. By way of background, councilmember Stokes has represented the city on the Cascade Board since 2014 and currently serves as the chair. Councilmember Lee also serves as the city's alternate to the board. With that, joining us this evening is Ray Hoffman, who's the Chief Executive Officer and Ed Seaburn, Chief Economist, both for the Cascade Water Lines. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Ray.
All right. Thank you, Brad. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, members of the Bellevue Council. Ed and I are going to do a joint presentation on the future of Cascade's water supply. I'm going to start with the high-level overview. And then when we drop down into more of the specifics and the details, I'm going to hand it over to Ed. Next slide, please. So our goal in this presentation is to cover four things. A quick overview of Cascade and its existing water supply, future water supply scenarios, ones that are still being actively considered and ones that were considered but tabled. An overview of the proposed Water Supply Development Fund and the financial and revenue impacts of such a fund on Bellevue and other member agencies. Just a reminder, for those of you who may not be familiar with Cascade, Cascade is one of the four big water suppliers in the central Puget Sound region. The map on this slide shows you the member agencies, five cities in two water and sewer districts for a total of seven member agencies. Cascade serves over 380,000 people and over 20,000 businesses and was formed over 20 years ago based on the following founding principles. And these founding principles basically are a reflection of the cities and districts that decided they wanted a significant role in the determination of their own water supply future. So they include a voice and a vote. And what they have meant by that is a voice and a vote different from the experience that they have had historically with the city of Seattle in determining their own water future. Equal rights to Cascade supplies with the rule that independent supplies are produced first. And what we mean by independent supplies is four of the member agencies of Cascade have their own supplies. Redmond, Sammamish Plateau, Issaquah and Skyway all have their own water supplies that are considered part of the Cascade portfolio. A durable governance structure, a dual-majority voting system. And what we mean by dual majority is that each member gets one vote as a member and then each member gets a weighted vote based on their demand share. So Bellevue is the largest member, has the largest weighted vote based on its demand share, which is just a little bit over 50%, I believe, at this time. And finally, a stable and predictable financial structure, which Cascade has managed to do for two decades. And it's under that last bullet that we're here to talk to you about continuing that through the creation of a Water Supply Development Fund. Okay. So Cascade's water supply, Cascade and all of its members currently receive their water from the city of Seattle. It is known as a declining block contract. We currently have the right to purchase up to 33 million gallons a day of water. We pay for that whole block, whether we use all of it in any given year or not. Cascade's member consumption is currently at about 28 million gallons a day out of that 33 MGD. And in 2039, that contract starts to decline over time, meaning that the amount that Cascade receive, will receive slowly starts declining, which gives us an indication that we need to be planning for where we're going to make up the water that we will no longer be receiving from Seattle. So we also have a water right for the municipal use of Lake Taps reservoir. That's the lake you see pictured there with Mount Rainier in the background. And that was the culmination of the first 10 years of Cascade's efforts, acquiring the water rights in a complex negotiation between the Department of Ecology, the Mukilshut Tribe, the Pualup Tribe, the Lakeside Communities and Lakeside homeowners. And right now, Lake Taps is called to be operational by 2042. So just about 20 years out from when we're speaking. Our business model is to use regional water to bridge demand until Lake Taps is operational. So to drop back, just as a reminder, Cascade's original contract with Seattle started to decline in 2024. But back in 2013, when Chuck Clark was CEO, Cascade and Seattle negotiated an extension of that contract, which brought it out to 2039. So if regional water is available and it's high-quality and cost-effective, Cascade's business model says that we're going to continue to pursue that until it becomes cheaper to develop Lake Taps than it does to buy water from another regional supplier. Regional water and supply demand pictures that have been updated in the last couple of years by Everett, Tacoma and Seattle show that there's ample regional water supply through 2060. So there's the possibility that Lake Taps can be deferred if we get an extended contract with Seattle or a new contract with Tacoma and we get an extension from the Department of Ecology on our water right development schedule. Next slide. All right. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ed and he's going to start by walking you through just how much the supply and demand picture has changed over the last 15 years. Ed?
Thank you, Ray. Yeah, as Cascade was, was conceived and implemented in the 90s, there was a, an extended period of increasing demands that was being forecast to continue. As you can see, at least since the year 2000 on this chart, and it actually started in the early 90s, actual demand in the entire region, which is basically the metropolitan areas of Pierce, King and Snohomish Counties, have, has gone down. It's gone down something on the order of 25% in absolute terms. At the same time, the population growth has gone up over 30%. The forecast going forward, hopefully we're getting better at forecasting, but it is still, you know, an art as well as a science. You can see here from early forecasts from 15 years ago, the projection was that the region would be out of water probably in the early 2040s if you included Cascade's demand. Current forecasts now show that instead of that, by 2060, there may still be something like 150 million gallons of water daily available regionally from the three big systems. Cascade's demand at that point is under 50 million gallons. So there is ample opportunity regionally to continue to pursue the strategy of contract and defer the major capital outlay for Lake Taps. We brought this information along with an outline of various water supply scenarios and their related costs to the board. We had a major retreat at the end of June where we reviewed both the supply scenarios and Cascade's long-term approach to funding those supplies. Specifically, we, we proposed last year during the budget process and came back in June with this concept of the Water Supply Development Fund, which would essentially be a sinking fund or a savings account to develop a down payment towards the project. It accomplishes several things. It accumulates cash towards the project, which reduces the amount we have to borrow and reduces ultimate rate impacts. It satisfies our fiscal policy requirements for a balanced capital structure that we don't get over-leverage. And it reduces and smoothes out rate impacts. And I would add one more bullet to this, and that is at the same time that we're accumulating cash, we're building revenue capacity that, that can then support the debt service for the remainder of the project when it's brought on board. You can think of this as building a ramp rather than approaching a, a brick wall in terms of how we would smooth out the rate impacts. And we'll get to a little later substantially reduce the overall rate impacts on our members and their customers. Based on all that information, the, the board gave us some direction that included to pursuing contract options both with Seattle and Tacoma and also to come back with resolutions and board actions necessary to implement the Water Supply Development Fund. And those are scheduled to be brought to the board in October. So a little more specific, the base scenario, as Ray had said, envisions having the Lake Tap Supply and Transmission System in service around 2042. But we want to continue to evaluate and pursue a Seattle extension and Tacoma new contract in the event that a Seattle's extension doesn't meet all our needs or doesn't occur. At the same time, the board clarified that they wanted us to remove from the table an option to get supply from Everett and no, no desire to discount Everett, but they're in the wrong direction as related to Lake Taps. So any infrastructure we were to build to deliver Everett water supply would not serve our longer-term purposes for delivering Lake Taps water and would be additive to our capital needs. Would not serve our longer term purposes for delivering Lake Tap's water and would be additive to our capital needs. Uh, at the same time, we were also told to remove the option of, uh, pursuing permanent, uh, purveyor contract with Seattle. Essentially abandoning the Cascade model and returning to, uh, the wholesale model. Part of the reason for that is, uh, through the development of the Lake Tap Supply Option Cascade has created obligations that extend into the future. Some relate to finance in terms of debt service, some relate to contractual obligations. Uh, to operate and maintain Lake Taps for not only municipal, but also recreational purposes as well as the, uh, fisheries, uh, obligations that go with that. Uh, in, in the presentation to the board and as part of our information tonight, um, we, we've demonstrated through, uh, forecasting that. The Water Supply Development Fund has a positive impact on all the supply scenarios being evaluated. Uh, in the base case, uh, it's, uh, again satisfies the fiscal policies. And generates roughly a quarter of the ultimate capital cost in cash with the remainder being debt financed. If we were to get an extension, uh, we, we can slow down the pace a little bit of, of accumulating those savings. But by the time we would build the project fifteen or twenty years later, we could fund on the order of half of the project. In the case of a Seattle extension with cash. In the case of Tacoma, it actually starts to break the capital needs into pieces because we have to start building some pipelines in the thirties. And the supply and remaining transmission in the fifties. Uh, but again, uh, the, uh, Water Supply Development Fund contributes. Major contribution towards the project cost and moderates the amount of debt needed. And the cost of that debt as well as the impact on rate pairs to repay it. Uh, looking at it from the other perspective, you know, nothing, there, there's no such thing as a free lunch. Uh, the Water Supply Development Fund does mean we start setting aside money now, and that does mean it's coming from our member charges. In terms of Bellevue's contribution, as we projected it over the remainder of this decade. Uh, the total that we would accumulate this decade is about thirty million dollars by the end of twenty twenty-nine. About six point seven million would is projected to come from m- member charges imposed on Bellevue. And you can see the progression here over time, it slowly steps up over time. Uh, by twenty twenty-nine, it's about one point eight million dollars. To put that in context, you pay about twenty million dollars to Cascade right now. Twenty-one point five as the footnote shows. The return for that though is, is pretty incredible in terms of, uh, couple of factors. First, within that same period of time, even with that funding in place. We project that Cascade's rates and charges to our members will go up at a rate below general inflation. Our assumed inflation rate in our forecasting is three percent. And to satisfy our financial needs in that context. We need increases on the order of two point two percent for the next five years, counting this current year. And about three percent for the years following that. Uh, you can see here a projection of the cost of per C E R U in terms of how much we charge you divided by your customer base. And its progression and the annual increase that goes with that. So these are fairly mu- and those increases and costs are reflective of all of Cascade's needs, not just the, uh, Supply Development Fund. Um, trying to take inflation out of the mix, we, we've said, we talked about comparing it to inflation. But it also lets us look longer term and have comparative values as we look out into the future. Uh, if you think of the current charge per customer, uh, as a flat line in turn, if it were to go up with inflation each year, that's the blue line on this. Graph that goes horizontal, our average charge to all members right now is about twenty dollars per C E R U. Um, what you can see is in the gray line or the gray curve, that's the base scenario with Lake Taps coming online in twenty forty-two. And even with the advanced funding, there's a major increase in rates needed in a real terms. Uh, you know, in excess of inflation to get us to that point. Uh, from twenty dollars now, it goes to twenty-eight by the time the project comes online. Even within that though, you can see that for the next decade, while we've begun funding the fund. It is below inflation and it's not till about twenty thirty-three that that gray line comes catches up to the inflation curve again. Uh, if we were to get a delay, uh, for example, from the Seattle, an extension of Seattle. If we got a fifteen-year extension from Seattle, that would mean we need the project online by the mid twenty-fifties. Uh, in that scenario, we can keep rates below their current levels, inflation adjusted for nearly thirty years. And when we fund the project, the impact is that much less. And I suspect sometime, uh, ten years from now, the next generation should be considering whether to. Push that curve upward a bit to continue to bring down that peak when the project comes online. However, if with a fifteen-year extension, we were to delay doing anything about paying for that future project. We do get an extended period of below inflation, uh, costs. But then we have a very severe run-up of, of rates in the twenty-fifties. And ultimately, we've gained nothing through the advantage of time. And the inflation adjusted rate is again over twenty-eight dollars. And you can see that, that line gets very steep there. There are increases on the order of twenty percent a year for something on the order of six or seven years consecutively. Which would triple, uh, roughly the rates in that period of time, uh, with inflation factored in. So from this perspective, the Water Supply Development Fund serves its purpose in all scenarios. A concern as we've talked about this with the board and strategized how to set this up is to make sure it is both accountable and transparent. Uh, the proposal accomplishes that by, uh, continuous, uh, check-in with the board. The board must approve all, any and all rate increases and through the budget process, any transfers intended for the Water Supply Development Fund. The board would authorize any use of the funds. The board would approve prior to beginning the project, a capital funding plan. That considers how to best use the cash on hand and, and, uh, debt strategy to complete the financing. And to look at, uh, risk factors such as, uh, cost contingencies. And finally, uh, there's a provision to redirect. The, the use of the funds if it turns out that, and the board concludes that they're not needed as planned or to the extent anticipated. And that could include reducing charges to members or even a direct distribution back to members if the fund were being liquidated. And that's the, uh, brief overview of our supply strategy and our, our approach to funding it. Back to Ray's point about, uh, the core principles of, of Cascade's formation. Uh, that, that idea of a stable and predictable finance is, is a significant one. Uh, one of the, uh, elected officials involved at the time described that they want to cascade to be an island of stability. And we think with this strategy, we can do that, we have moderate predictable increases. And a, and a rational strategy to financing a major project in the future. Thank you, we'll open it to discussion and questions.
Terrific, beautiful slides, by the way, love those pictures. Um, Councilmember Stokes, would you like to, uh, kick us off here?
I think you are, uh,
I, I wasn't muted and I muted myself, it's okay. Uh, now I'm back. Um, yeah, appreciate the, uh, the presentation, uh, this is something. This isn't, I just want to make it clear, this isn't something we just started working on this, uh, last year, this is a long-term project and, um. As, as noted, you know, Cascade goes back, uh, over what now, almost twenty, twenty years now. And, um, the projections, uh, of what will happen in the future, of course, are always, uh, difficult. And is, is presented, um, the water supply is, um, hasn't, uh, diminished in the way we thought it would be. There are factors that we've looked at in terms of with, uh, recent, uh, climate change and recent water issues. Uh, how that's affected and. You know, the whole, the issue of whether Seattle will continue to have a supply of water and we would want to purchase from them. Uh, those are other factors and it's one of these, um, I think it's something that we've, um, looked at and, and see it and. Uh, Bellevue has been a, a leader in this, uh, process over the years, um, and, um. And, uh, we've been looking at this from the standpoint of what is best for us down the line and. Um, one of the factors of having Lake Taps is actually is, is a negotiating tool, uh, with, um. Other suppliers, uh, I mean, it's, it's a complex thing and I think we've, over the years, um. Cascade has gotten itself put in a position where, uh, it is the best, uh, solution to the long-range plans and. By having, uh, different options we could go to. Um, and again, this, um. Program or this effort to get Lake Taps to a point where it would supply waters to Bellevue and the other cities. Uh, is something that's, uh, was envisioned at the very beginning and worked, um. Uh, has always been in the plans in this and it would actually result in a fairly minor, um. Increase at this point for, uh, rate pairs, it's kind of like the, the rates that we put into our seventy-five-year. Um, uh, you know, keeping the system working in Bellevue, uh, people pay things now that. Um, you know, will benefit people in the future. Um, but in both, in both cases, we, we work that so that it is to the, uh, least extent possible. But to actually to achieve the goal, um, so I think it's, um. Again, it's a long-term program that's been put in place. Lake Taps has a lot of potential and even if we never, never develop it. Uh, the return to the cities and return to the, uh, organization, um, will be very positive. Uh, so again, it's, it's, you know, we don't, we don't engage in these kind of things, uh. In, in city work that much where you're looking something in, you know, forty years out. Uh, but you don't get to things that work in forty years out unless it is a plan that's worked on all along during the whole process. So, um, what we're proposing is that we, uh, put this plan in place and start working on it and, and making sure that. Uh, we have adequate water supplies, uh, in the future. And as it shows out, we have options, uh, what will happen with Seattle is, is, um, not, um, clear. Uh, the fact that we actually have, uh, another supply that we could develop is a good, as I said, is a good, uh. Option to have when you're negotiating for supplies at this point. Um, and we, um, when we first came up and talked about this, um. We realized that, and I, I felt that it was really necessary for us to go out and actually have a conversation with each of the cities, which we did, and we've had, this is the last one. And they've all been very positive, um, and, um. Again, um, and I know there'll be a lot of questions to ask and then some good ones to, to talk about, but. I think that this is, um, based on, um, work that city, uh, Bellevue and city leaders and the utilities and people who have been in the utilities all along have. Put together and worked on this and, um. It's something that's in the best interest of Bellevue and of the region going forward and. I hope that, um, you know, we can get to the point where we will support this and, um. Put this in place and continue the excellence that Cascade has represented in the last, um. Uh, twenty, almost twenty years. So. Any questions?
Okay, let's go through, uh, each council member and I'll start with Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, as an alternate, uh, to John, uh, on the Cascade Water Alliance. I've been learning a lot. And, uh, when the Cascade Water Alliance was established twenty-two years ago, ninety ninety-nine. It was a great, great need to have a water supply, you know, to guarantee that we don't, uh, get. Um, uh, taken advantage by Seattle, you know, water supply, especially with rates keep going up. Uh, eventually, you know, uh, we are at the mercy of, uh, you know, somebody else, so it makes a lot of sense. Uh, but as, you know, you know that it's a, this is a big project. And, uh, I believe that in from my observation Cascade Water Alliance staff, uh, is doing a great job. And I think the board is very responsive and very responsible with all the cities participating. And, uh, however, as we know, you know, this is a, a big project, uh, it's a long-time, long-term project. It goes the whole way to twenty forty, twenty sixty, maybe even longer. And whether it's going to be ever built, we don't know, but it, it's a good, good investment regardless. But there are many things that can happen. In the meantime, uh, people are putting money into it. And, uh, so, you know, who is put, so the money put into it was from the rate payers. You know, from Bellevue residents and other cities, uh, rate payers. And Bellevue, of course, has more than fifty percent, so we, we are key play in this. And I think there's some cities, uh, and I believe myself that, uh, the rate payers need to be in touch. They need to be, to know because the principle I've just, uh, just mentioned is the stability, stable and predictable. And that means we have to be transparent, we have to communicate with, let the people know. Uh, when we, the rate's gonna be affected, obviously, as we know, or however, and the rate will continue to go up. Uh, as it is necessary because we have to provide financial stability and predictability. And, uh, the only problem is that future is never certain. Especially with so many scenarios ahead of us, you know, all the way from whether we're gonna have the water resource to, you know, other opportunities. Whether we will have it or won't have it, there are many, many things we can do. And, uh, so, uh, in order to make sure that people, uh, putting money into it and they're questioning. Not questioning necessarily, but they, they want to be informed, uh, there are gonna be a lot of other demands for taxpayers' money, you know, in various, uh, endeavors. We just heard earlier about homeless, homelessness issues, home, uh, housing issues. These are all major items people have to, uh, pay in su- support. So this is one of which, you know, we're talking about not, uh, little money, it's one point eight billion dollars. And in the future, it's gonna be, you know, whatever that may be. So I think, uh, some of the community, uh, cities, other cities believe support the same thing is we need to communicate. And let people know, uh, where the money goes, what are we doing? Uh, all the way from no water, our own, or two, we have one. And in the meantime, what do we do with the money, you know, in the reserve or whatever? As a result, I think we need to, uh, make sure, uh, the council of each city, uh, is aware of that. And we can communicate to the public who is paying for this and where the money is going, what are we doing? And what are the contingencies where the possibilities in the future? So I think that's essential, that's very important. And I think that, uh, uh, that's the reason why Cascade Water Alliance is, I'm really glad, I'm really, really. Uh, this, and, uh, you know, in, uh, glad that they are talking to us, presenting this to the city, to us, to the city council. And so that we can, uh, uh, have it thoroughly, uh, understood. And then communicate with our rate payers. So that they know exactly, you know, what are the different opportunity scenarios and contingencies or how we're gonna spend the money. I think that's the key, how to use the money, transparency important. So I believe that they are using certain principles which are very consistent with the Bellevue utility. You know, we are very, we, Bellevue utility is run very well, we have great principles, we have great, uh, financial, uh, re- reserve plans. And we know exactly what we do, we know the impact to the rate payers of the rate we set. And I believe that Cascade Water Alliance understand that and I think overall generally it follows the same principle. And so my thought is that, uh, I, we cannot, uh, as the council, in many of you, uh, as I wasn't. Internally, uh, involved with the, the operation of Cascade Water Alliance, uh, we, we shouldn't be. But I think it's important for us, if we're to communicate with the public. Where are we gonna put the money, how it's gonna go and how do we plan to use it? And what are the contingencies, what are the scenarios you're looking at? I think that need to be done, uh, done, need to be done.
Thank you.
And so.
I think that's good.
My, yeah, my recommendation is quickly. Are we gonna, yeah, staff need to step in and give us a real good, uh, briefing, understanding how all this works. So that the council can be very comfortable to, uh, support and go with this recommendation.
Thank you, so, um, I should have said this before, um, Councilmember Lee started talking, but he speaks to a good point and everything that we. Talk about tonight, staff is going to take back with them and when they bring this back to us, it will. With their recommendation, it will have, they will have considered our comments, um. Councilmember Barksdale.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, I guess, I have a lot of questions, but I guess.
I guess I have a lot of questions, but I guess I'm curious. It sounds like the primary benefit of having our own supply is the independence and reduce like sort of effects of being tied to another city. I guess what? Where am I going with that? What? What, I guess I'm I'm curious about sort of the age of Seattle's infrastructure and or sort of like other costs that we might see by relying on another city's infrastructure versus like going with Lake Taps over time. Does that make sense?
Sure. Ed, do you want to start?
Sure, be glad to. Yeah, Seattle has, Seattle envisioned its system back in the eighteen nineties, so there are elements of it that aren't very young. The the water supply comes from the, in the Cascades, the Cedar River watershed and the Tolt River watershed. The supply lines from the Cedar are some of the oldest pipes in their system. They do monitor them. They they do manage them, but there has not been a significant investment or reinvestment that's occurred yet. So there is definitely a risk there, but to my knowledge, they have no information projecting costs that go with that risk. I guess one advantage of where we're at now is our contract will diminish over time and we'll be less responsible for that next generation of infrastructure costs there if and when we have Lake Taps online. But trying to predict their rates, they've been very stable for the last ten or fifteen years relative to inflation. Best guess is that's going to continue, but there there are, there are risks with aging infrastructure. And to be candid, I mean, the Lake Tap system that we acquired was a power system developed, you know, around nineteen-ten, and there are some old elements of that that we've been working on in our twenty years now or the ten years roughly that we've owned it to basically rehabilitate them.
Okay, so that, so there is the the chance that we could pay more longer term by tapping into an aging infrastructure than the, than the cost that would, that we would have building our own infrastructure through Lake Taps.
That that is possible, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, followed by Councilmembers on.
Thanks. Good discussion and really good information. So I'm glad this is coming back to us. And I just want to check when we next have this on our agenda, and this is a question for Bellevue staff. Is the purpose so that we can weigh in on the options that are, that were on the PowerPoint? Let me just make sure I see the right ones. That we're on the scenario, supply scenarios, so that we can give direction to our representatives? Is that the purpose of the next meeting? Okay, I'm seeing a head nod. I just want to make sure. So so with that purpose in mind, I'd like to just put a couple of questions on the board for staff to investigate so that when it comes back. Because from my perspective, you know, the history of why we did Cascade was we wanted to, really two things. One, a permanent supply of water for the, you know, next hundred years and two, making sure that we had the best, most competitive rates for our ratepayers. So to that end, I don't know why the purveyor contract with Seattle of a permanent supply is no longer an option that is being studied. I would be interested to know more about that. Second, I'm wondering what our contract is with Cascade and, you know, what we are obligated to do going forward. I I can't remember. I know I read it probably ten years ago. Third, I'd like the staff to have a hard look at the different scenarios and which option is recommended by staff so that we can then take a vote and give direction to Councilmember Stoke and Councilmember Lee. And from my perspective, the, one of the things that we really need to weigh heavily is what is the best deal for ratepayers? Every council member sitting up here knows how much the residents of the city complain about how expensive our water is compared to some of our neighbors. We get a lot of complaints about that. So going forward, what is going to be the best way to provide water for the future at the best rates? That's really my concern. So no questions for the Cascade folks. Appreciate you guys coming down and waiting so late to talk to us, but I would like to have staff give that analysis back to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmembers on, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the coming to the council and helping us understand the options that are in front of us. I guess in addition to Councilmember Robertson's question, when you show the slide about the original two thousand and three forecast versus the twenty-nineteen, it looks like what we're saying now is that when we look at twenty-sixty, we are still going to have quite a bit of water capacity through the existing contracts. I wanted to make sure I understood that because for me, that may be the biggest question I have is one of timing. So if we are seeing the water usage, conservation or whatever other means, that the demand is actually not growing to the degree we originally thought in the forecast, then from a total cost of ownership and when we might want to make changes, it's not, I don't completely understand why if the demand is less that we need to be taking these steps now versus a little bit later. So can you help me understand that?
Sure. And I think the answer lies primarily in our con, in Cascade's contract with Seattle. Beginning in twenty-thirty-nine, it goes down. It goes down two million gallons a year for four years and then one million gallons a year after that. So even if demands were to stay flat, couple of years after twenty-thirty-nine, we don't have enough water supply to fulfill Cascade's obligation to supply its members simply because that contract capacity goes away. So the graphs that you saw were actually all of the supplies of of those, of the three major surface water systems Everett, Seattle and Tacoma and excluded Cascade from the forecast. And then basically the gap between capacity and that curve is the amount that would be available to sell Cascade. And extension of the contract satisfies that. Although at some point in time, we do start seeing some upward pressure on on water demands. At some point, the continued growth must manifest itself as more water demand. At least that's the thinking. And so by about twenty-fifty-five, Cascade contract with Seattle, even if it were extended, would no longer so it's completely meet our needs. And we'd be looking elsewhere either, either to expand that, add to, add another contract to it or build our own supply.
Okay, that wasn't quite as clear in that graph, so maybe as we move forward, a little bit more clarity would be helpful there. And then I guess as I think about then the total cost of ownership of building out Lake Taps and really understanding, because I think there were also some comments in here about the fact that the cost that's being captured is the capital cost and not necessarily the operation and maintenance cost. So I don't know if that, if I misunderstood what was described or that whether we clearly understand the full picture of the cost of building out Lake Taps.
It, yes, the the forecasts that you saw include all of the projected costs. We tend to fixate on the capital cost because it's a major lump sum amount to be built before we can start using the facility. But we do have operating costs built in from that point forward. Repair and replacement costs, all of the costs to convey the water northward and continued capital costs. Over time, we'd have to complete expansion of the treatment capacity and extension of the transmission system to get get water to all our members as that Seattle contract continues to decline. But the forecast you saw is all inclusive to the best of our ability. Now that said, you know, part of the advantage of this approach is it gives us some flexibility and not to, not to pick on any neighbors, but when Brightwater was conceived, it was a six hundred and fifty million dollar project and it was brought home for two billion dollars. If something like that were to happen, our forecast is obviously not sufficient to meet it, but the fact that we have both cash and financial capacity helps us better weather it.
Okay, thank you.
And Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation tonight. Really appreciate it, staying, again, staying so late. I I just want to be clear about the, the, which I believe are still ongoing negotiations with the city of Seattle. Have they given any indication they want, wouldn't want to re-up the contract with Cascade?
So at this point, the discussions with Seattle, they've been put on hold while Seattle finishes another set of contract discussions it has with the rest of its wholesale customers. So beyond the seven members of Cascade, there are another, I believe, sixteen jurisdictions or water districts that have a different sort of purchasing arrangement with Seattle that goes through twenty-sixty. And Seattle expressed that they wanted to finish those discussions up before they actively engaged with Cascade. Having said that, Cascade, Seattle is aware that Cascade is interested in getting an extension. And we believe that there's ample water for that to occur, should, should the terms be favorable to both parties. So if you look back at the demand, the supply and demand chart, you'll see that all of the regional forecasts that have been adopted by the three, three big regional suppliers, so adequate supplies. So the supply is there and Councilmember, I think the issue for Cascade will be when we sit down with Seattle, can we get terms that we believe are favorable to Cascade's members to get a contract extension?
Done. And then there's no, I believe I heard you, there's no capacity issue. There's plenty of water to go beyond twenty-forty-two for Cascade if we were able to come to an agreement with all parties.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you so much. And I just wanted to echo the the comments about the the independent staff review of this as well. We've got outstanding utility staff and some really good questions mentioned earlier by Councilmember Robertson as well. Would love to see that analysis before moving forward on on anything, but certainly appreciate the presentation and the idea around this. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I just, you know, I look at that and I can't help but wonder what the impact of climate change is going to have on these as you, as you look out to the future, these predictions. So I, you don't have to tell me right now, but I hope staff can give us a little synopsis of how that is impacting your recommendations when you bring them back to us. And I think that the council members are going to want to see the pros and cons of each approach. And then you've gotten some specific questions as well. So that's all I think we have for that, but I'm looking forward to hearing this again. And thank you very much for your presentation and for everybody's good work on this. And thank you, Councilmember Stokes and Councilmember Lee, for your work on this.
Great. Thanks for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a report on regional issues from Lacy Jane.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again. I have four short verbal updates to give you in addition to the materials that are in your packet. Wanted to draw your attention to the fact that last week Governor Inslee extended the statewide eviction moratorium to October thirty-first. As you know, in July, staff estimated that approximately two thousand households in Bellevue were very likely to be evicted within the next month. And approximately five thousand six hundred households were considered somewhat likely to be evicted within the next two months. And as you will recall, council recognized this urgent need for housing stability resources by allocating about seven million dollars in assistance for Bellevue residents. As Councilmember Dunn mentioned earlier tonight, some other agencies need a little bit more time to allocate their housing stability funding. So the eviction moratorium extension is intended to allow those other agencies time to get that money allocated to where it is needed most. Moving on, another item that came out after your packet was put together is that your past regional issues packets have provided you updates on the Washington state redistricting process, which occurs every ten years with new census data. And districts are rebalanced to keep them roughly proportional. The latest is that the Redistricting Commission, as planned, released draft maps as part of an ongoing conversation about how to rebalance districts. So staff will send those to council via email later this week. And they're also available online to the public at redistricting.wa.gov. So if you love to look at maps, that's the place to go. And of course, more information will be provided in next month's regional issues packet. Looking ahead, two, two things to keep in mind as we start drawing to the close of the year. Even though it seems that we just finished the twenty-twenty-one legislative session, it's already time to prepare for the twenty-twenty-two session. And council adopts a state legislative session, as you know, a state legislative agenda before each session. So next month, staff will be in touch with you to discuss your thoughts and priorities for the twenty-twenty-two legislative agenda. And I wanted to flag that for you in advance, so you could start thinking about that. And these conversations will help us prepare materials for your review and discussion of a draft legislative agenda at a future council meeting. My very last update is that Sound Cities Association has appointment authority to a number of regional boards and committees that you all serve on. So Sound Cities Association is beginning their process for twenty-twenty-two appointments. Bellevue staff will work with the mayor and with council to put together and submit Bellevue's applications for appointments for twenty-twenty-two. So we will be in touch with you regarding that as well. And that's it from me tonight, Mayor.
Great. Any comments or questions on this from anybody? All right, I'm looking forward to our discussions on the legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce our last item tonight?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmembers, we have one last item under land use with respect to a quasi judicial matter as it relates to the Northeast Eighth Street partners. With that, I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to our city attorney Kathy Gerla, as well as our land use director Liz Sted. Kathy and Liz.
Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, council. Before you tonight is consideration of an application to rezone two parcels on Northeast Eighth Street from office to residential high density or R thirty. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to just provide an initial overview of the rezone application. Liz Sted, the city's land use director, and Carol Orr, an associate land use planner, are here to give that presentation and to answer any questions that you may have related to information in the record. Council is not being asked tonight to take action on the application. Staff will come back at a future meeting for final council action. Though just as a reminder, this is a process three quasi judicial proceeding where the hearing examiner held an evidentiary hearing and then made a recommendation to the council and the council ultimately makes the final decision based on the information in the record. Before I turn this over, and excuse me, I should say there was no appeal filed. So the hearing examiner has recommended approval and no appeal was filed. So before I turn this over to Ms. Sted and Ms. Orr, because it is quasi judicial, Mayor, I'd recommend taking a brief moment to give council members the opportunity to disclose any ex parte communications they may have had with the applicant or anyone else who is supporting or opposing the application. And as usual, staff has already checked your council email boxes, so you don't need to disclose anything that would be in those email accounts.
Can I ask as a, as a group or do I need to ask each one individually?
You can ask as a group.
Is there anybody who has any ex parte communications to reveal to us? Okay, I see no, and I'm a no as well.
So I'll turn this over to Ms. Sted and Ms. Orr.
Thank you, Ms. Gerla, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House and members of council. Thank you so much for having us here this late evening. We'll try and get through this. As you may recall, with these process three quasi judicial projects, we will be presenting the same PowerPoint that was presented to the hearing examiner when they were, had their hearing to make their recommendation. So if it looks a little out of context, that is the reason. It is the same PowerPoint as it is part of the record that you'll be basing your decision on. I'm going to pass this on to Carol Orr, a associate planner in our group, who will go ahead and give you the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, all. I'm hoping you can see the PowerPoint. Please let me know if you have any difficulty.
Looks good.
Very good. Very good. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, and city council members. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Carol Orr. I am the land use planner with Development Services Department who manages this permit. I am here this evening to present the Northeast State Street Partners Rezone for your consideration. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the land use portion of this process. This is a site-specific rezone. It follows the process three framework for decision. Process three decisions are quasi judicial, with the decision being made by city council. However, because the two subject sites in this proposal are also within the East Bellevue Community Council, that body will also need to approve or disapprove this rezone after you have made your decision. The hearing examiner has held a public hearing and has published a recommendation that is summarized in the council package you have, and it is included for review in the council library. Some general information, the applicant has proposed this site-specific rezone of the two parcels located at one three six three five and one three six five five Northeast Eighth. These sites are currently located in an office type O land use district. The proposal would modify the zoning of these two parcels to match the designation of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment that was approved by council in December of last year, thereby creating a consistency between the zoning and the comprehensive plan designation. The subject sites are surrounded on all sides by multifamily housing, as well as on the opposite side of Northeast State. This map shows the sites are located along the south side of Northeast State, approximately seven hundred feet west of the intersection between Hundred and Fortyth Avenue Northeast and Northeast Eight. This map shows the current comprehensive plan designations for the subject parcels and adjacent parcels. The subject sites are notated in red, and they are designated as multifamily high density. This map designates the proposal and shows how they are currently developed with commercial uses. One is a veterinary office with surface parking. The other is a two-story commercial building with underbuilding parking. As you can see on the map, the sites are completely surrounded by parcels which are zoned for multifamily high-density housing. This rezone proposal requests to modify the zoning of these two parcels to R thirty, which will bring them into consistency with the comprehensive plan designation of multifamily high-density. You can also see that on the north side of Northeast State that it is still high-density. I apologize, my, my slides are not moving forward quickly. This slide goes over the process and the meeting process that was done under the permit review. A notice of application and a public meeting were published on May twentieth of this year in the weekly permit bulletin. And a public notice site was installed on each of the parcels on that date. And a notice was mailed to all property owners within five hundred feet of the subject properties. A courtesy public hearing was held on June first with, during a regularly scheduled East Bellevue Community Council meeting. No comments were received from any members of the public at the courtesy hearing, and no members of the East Bellevue Community Council raised any concerns related to this rezone application. City noticed our notice of recommendation and the notice of the public hearing on August fifth of this year. The hearing examiner held a public hearing for the rezone on August twenty sixth and subsequently published a report recommending council approval of the application. Only city staff and members of the applicant's team were present at the hearing. No members of the public attended the meeting or provided any comments. This slide shows the decision criteria required by the Land Use Code for the approval of a rezone. Has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, bear substantial relation to public health, safety, or welfare, warranted in order to achieve consistency with the comprehensive plan, not be materially detrimental to the uses or property in the immediate vicinity, and to have merit and value for the community as a whole. During our review, it was determined that the proposed rezone met these criteria. And the hearing examiner adopted that recommendation based on the application, meaning the decision criteria shown below. It was determined that the rezone was necessary to achieve consistency with the comprehensive plan approval that was done in December of twenty twenty. Additionally, it was forecasted the city will need to provide additional housing, and this proposal will allow for additional housing opportunities to meet the forecasted demand. The rezone also allows for the construction of additional housing units in an area that is already serviced by public transit. Development of these two subject sites will be consistent with the existing development on adjacent sites. The hearing examiner found that that the proposal would achieve the consistency of the adopted Comprehensive Plan Amendment and that it had met all the decision criteria as documented in your staff report. The hearing examiner also adopted this condition of approval, indicating that this rezone approval does not constitute any approval of any land use entitlement or any other permits that may be required for the design or construction of any potential development on the site. Thank you for your consideration of the Northeast State Street Partners Rezone. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Would you mind putting the criteria that the hearing examiner used to make his, his or her decision up again, please?
Yes. There you are.
There you go. All right, thank you. Okay, let me see if I can see everybody. Does anybody have any comments or questions on this? Okay, wow, that surprises me, but that's a good surprise. So yeah, yes, tell us what's going to happen next.
So again, no decision is being asked of the council tonight. We do anticipate coming back on, at the October eleven meeting with a request for a final decision to either approve or disapprove the rezone application.
All right, sounds very good. Believe that that was the last thing on our list of things to do and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Sorry, I turned my camera. There I am. All right, thank you. Good night.
Good night.